Good evening. This is a meeting of the Rattan Board of Education, committee, the whole meeting being held on Monday, December eighth, 2025, at six o'clock in the central office in room eleven and online. Online tonight, we have Adrian Johnson, we have Ian Thomas's online, Dr. Andrea Ackerman, Jay, and Sean. They're all online. And in person, we have Mike Whitney, Jen White, Mitch Schinblock. And he came back. This is his second meeting, so I'm glad to be here. And we have myself, Brett Washington, we have the superintendent of schools, Susan Austin, we have the director of special ed, Denise Doolittle, and the director of facilities, Sam Kelppatrick. And then we have our esteemed guest on the side. There's so many, I'm not going to mention everybody's name. But when they come up to speak, they can state their own name. Okay. Thank you, guys, for coming out tonight. I apologize for being five minutes late. Apologize for that. Okay. The first item on the agenda is review the November seventeenth, 2025 minutes. Any corrections? I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I'm going to approve the minutes.
All right. Second, okay. Any corrections, or?
Maybe not a correction. I hadn't noticed this before, but on like three of the items, it lists attachment one, attachment two, attachment three, which was from the agenda. Of course, in the minutes, they wouldn't be linked to anything. I don't know if we usually do that or not, or if it matters to get rid of it. So whatever's usually done is fine with me, but I notice it's got like these parentheses that really aren't linked to anything. They were on the agenda, though.
Okay. I'll check on that. Anything else? Okay. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
Aye. Oh, I forgot you guys are online already. Jay, how do you vote? Do you approve the minutes? Jay? Ian? Okay. Adrian?
Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Dr. A? Dr. A, do you approve the minutes? Nope. Yes. Sean?
I approve.
Okay. So we have two that didn't answer. So seven, two, zero, two, zero. Okay. Okay. Thank you. All right. So the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is who's going to go first? Rattan Middle School?
Gets to go first.
Rattan Middle School will come forward and will review their data and student improvement plan. Adrian, come on up here.
Do you, should he stand at the podium, or do you want him to sit?
Wherever you're comfortable. I would sit.
All right.
Is that what you're doing with the presentation?
Yes. Mark, you're going to put up the presentation. And you can pull up another couple chairs, too.
And just make sure when you're speaking, that you speak in the microphone. It's excellent.
Sam, you want to grab two more chairs?
Thank you.
Nice.
I, I can start by orienting us to the presentation when you're ready.
First, they might want to introduce themselves. Then I have some. All right.
Ready?
Yep.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Peter Bass. I am the principal of Rattan Middle. It's our pleasure to be here this evening to share data and our plan for improvement. With me this evening are Assistant Principal Samantha Singleton, Assistant Principal Keith Danielak, our sixth world math coordinator, Caitlin Crowley, Jamal Davis, Assistant Principal, is out sick and unfortunately could not join us this evening.
And before you start, Pierre, before you get into the presentation, can you talk to us about what's special at your school? What's, what are the good things about your school?
Absolutely.
And then what are the challenges in your school?
Okay. And really, that, I was going to speak to that in our first lab, and I'm happy to talk to it now. Talk to it now. So we are an esteemed school. Additionally, we are an NYPD school, and we are, we have a robust offering of classes from our core classes to our ensemble music classes, our Project Be the Way offerings, our computer and media classes. But in addition to that, we have fantastic, and our theater, our in-school theater offerings. We just had two fantastic performances of Circus Olympus on Thursday, Friday night of last week. We had about fifty students involved and really got to shine and share their talents on stage. That is our fall play. We will have a musical in the spring, Frozen Junior. We are still looking forward to that. When tonight, we have our chorus concert coming up next Thursday, yeah, next Thursday, right? Tuesday or next Thursday. We have Banded Orchestra. Really, we are really blessed to have talented professionals working with our students. One highlight, which I'd like to bring forth as it speaks to computer literacy, is visiting one of our computer literacy teachers' classes tomorrow. Evan Rubin's class will be Lieutenant Governor Susan Bysowicz, along with the Commission of Education for the State of Connecticut, along with some other dignitaries, many of whom we know. And I would like to invite each of you to also attend if you are available. She, Lieutenant Governor is coming to kick off her annual computer computing challenge. And last year, Mr. Rubin's class took part in it, and we actually had, one of the sixth grade students was honored at the state level. And last year, we participated in the webinar with Lieutenant Governor and the Commission of Education. And this year, we were invited to host, be the host site for the webinar to be broadcast tomorrow. So they're going to livestream that. So again, if you're available, dignitaries start to gather at ten. The official remarks will begin at ten fifteen, and then the webinar will go from ten thirty to eleven thirty. In addition to...
Thank you for the invite.
Yeah. And I hope you can make it. And hopefully, you saw it from a few weeks ago, too. This is not your first invitation. We also have a fantastic offering of after-school clubs and activities. We try to have a wide variety to catch the interest of our students. We run them in, in short cycles, six to eight weeks, and students can join and explore, which is so important at the middle school level, for students to be able to explore and figure out what they're interested in, who they are, as they move forward and get ready for high school and beyond.
Okay.
Challenges? Challenges is, we are, I, I will always bring this forward, we are limited by the space in which we work. It's a beautiful building, relatively new, five years old. But we continue to brush up against every day, needing more space to really meet the needs of our students and allow our staff to work at their full capacity. So that is, that's a challenge. Additional challenges happen to be, who are student populationists? We love them dearly, and we are excited every day to come to work with them. But we are forty-six percent freely-reduced lunch, nineteen percent special education population out of a, a population of eighty-six as of October one, but we're right around that, as well as having five percent multi-language learners. So those present challenges to us. And as I said, we embrace those challenges, but the challenge is nonetheless.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hey, Mark. You can put it back up again.
Yeah.
So this is formatted very similarly as the others that you've seen, that it's really important that we share the data and we look at our strategic plan and highlight those areas that really, this is really connected to, the accelerating learning, and also the, the environment and making sure that we're kind of responsive to our kids in the environment and being able to take care of it. I would say that there are, you know, we relate it to the key indicators, performance indicators, but it's always important to say, okay, we've got these results, so what, now what? What are we going to do about them? What is, what are our action plans, our action steps? And this is a little historic, because we're going to go back and tell you what we had planned for this year that, that was tested and what the results were. And, and then we're going to plan ahead for this upcoming year. What are the areas of focus and what are we going to do about it? So enjoy.
Next slide.
Next slide. And of course, that's the, that's kind of the dashboard where you can click on it and you can get to all the data pieces, you know, and it's actually showcased online. And you all have copies of it, and you've got it digitally, so you can always look back at that.
All right. So as I was mentioning, this is who we are. And before I get into this slide, and just to give you a preview of what you can expect this evening, I will speak to who we are. Keith Danielak will take you through our data tables and charts. I will come back and, and share with you our plan for accelerating achievement. As Ms. Austin mentioned, we'll take a look back, snapshot of last year and what the outcomes of some of those plans were, and then get into where we are moving forward for this year. Finally, Sam Singleton will speak to our plan to cultivate a rich and vibrant learning community. And then we would love to take your questions. All right. Okay. So as I was mentioning, this is our student makeup.
Wait a minute. I'm stuck for a second.
Absolutely.
Dr. A, you have your hand up?
Maybe that's from the vote.
Oh, okay. Go ahead.
Okay, sure.
See, just stick it down.
So one piece of information which is very important to us is what is our chronic absenteeism rate? We were at twenty-six point one percent twenty twenty-three, twenty point two in twenty four, twenty twenty-four, and then up two percent, I'm sorry, point two percent last year to twenty point four percent. This is a, a key area of focus for us this year, is improving our attendance, looking at our daily attendance rate, but also looking to reduce our chronic absenteeism. And really, a lot of messaging and, and data tracking as well as communication with, with parents and the community. We're putting a lot of effort into that this year, along with weekly attendance committee meetings to really focus our, our work. And so far, we are seeing a nice uptick year over year this time. Last year, we were, we were at, I didn't print out the presentation. I thought, see, my glasses, are we? Last year, we were roughly eighty-five percent. This year, almost ninety-five percent daily average. Thank you so much. And then the quote that I, I put there is something that our school leadership team identified as being really like our motto for this year as it really relates to our, our school improvement plan. We're going to foster a culture of high engagement and deep inquiry while ensuring students receive the targeted social, emotional support necessary to thrive. And really, we know that student engagement, engagement drives achievement, but it requires that learners feel supported and present. And I, I encourage you to look for the links to that, direct links that we will share with you this evening through our, our plan to accelerate achievement as well as to cultivate a rich and vibrant learning community. All right. At this point, let me ask.
With the absenteeism?
Yes.
Are the students absent because they're sick? Do you?
There's a, there's a wide range of reasons why students are absent. They can be sick. They might be going on vacation while it's good to go on vacation because it's not as busy at Disney when it's not school break. It could be that a deployed parent is coming home and they need, need to spend some time with them. There are many, many reasons. Some are related to social, emotional, health. There's a wide range that we're finding. And sometimes, sometimes parents are, are looking for the support of the school to come out and say, hey, you need to get a vet, come to school because it's important. And we're happy to make those visits, and we are making those visits.
Do you have a lot of students that are absent, like five days or more in a month, or?
Not a lot, but we will get into our, our plan for, for that as we go forward. Do we have a lot? I mean, it depends on your definition of a lot. But we are less than we are last year. We're looking to drive down, you know, because as it works with chronic absenteeism, it's based upon the percentage of days you're absent as opposed in comparison to the total number of days in a school year. So if you missed five days in a month, well, technically, you're, you're, you're chronically absent for that month. Let's say you're absent five days in September. Now, only twenty days or so have gone by. You're definitely beyond that, that, that ten percent threshold. But if you continue to attend, you may outgrow that and become no longer chronic. And that's our goal for those who have missed that time. All right. All right. I'm going to ask Mr. Danielak to take you.
Do you track the reasons people are absent?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Might be good to have some of that data.
You certainly could provide yourself. We have, we have a secretary that, and again, we'll get into some of these, these details in the, in the presentation. But we have a, a secretary who we have really helped clear, clear schedule and reassign some duties so that we can have really daily, actual data that comes in to us and allows school counselors and administrators to, to act on it. We have people making folk also. Mr. Hastings, who's a secretary that does a lot of work with that, has a very familiar voice to those, those parents who, students are absent. And he is very encouraging, but he gets, he gets to the crux of the issue and passes that information on so that we can work with those families and support them. Because it's not a matter of us saying, hey, you need to be in school, come to school. It's, we, we see you're not at school. We miss you. We want you to be here. How can we support you as a family to get your child to school?
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Danielak, if you could take us through some past year's data as well as this year's data, and then we'll speak to the...
Sean, Sean.
I have a quick question. I'm actually looking at the absenteeism, we have to talk about the students. Have you compared that, and I don't believe this in this presentation, to look at the performance, that students are having on the S back on the SAT to sell, if it's having significant impact on their test scores and overall readiness?
So I don't have that information to share with you tonight. We, we did ask for an in-depth dive on that from last year. That's something that we could certainly share. So in, in short, no, that's not something that I, that I have at my fingertips, Sean, but what we can tell you is that when students aren't at school, they're not learning. I mean, I, I think that, that's, that's, I'm, I'm saying the obvious.
Yeah.
But we know that that's, that's truly impactful. And, and part of our, our theme this year, as we do our work to accelerate achievement, is while we know that students have to be at school, and if they're at school, they need to be engaged. And if they're engaged, then they're achieving. And if they're having success and getting the support that they need, they can continue to achieve and attend. It's really, it's, it's cyclical, right? Because if you create an environment in which students feel supported and engaged, they're going to want to be at school. But you've got to get them at school sometimes first to get them that into. So we, it's finding that entry point in that cycle sometimes is, is at the crux of the issue.
So when you get that and gather that data, if you can share it with the board, we would appreciate it.
You got it. Shut that down.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us, giving us the opportunity to discuss our students and our staff. And really, I think as this presentation goes along, kind of the really important work that we're doing and some of the ideas that we're excited to see come to fruition this year. You know, this portion of the presentation you have in front of you, you've had, these are, these are the numbers. This is the data. Obviously, our S back scores are one data point that we, we want to look at. We want to see where we're achieving each year. It's a really good focus for us. But I think what you'll see as we go through, there's, these are numbers. Each number is represented by a student. And I think you're going to see how we're really going to try to focus on those individuals in, in hopes to move some of these numbers in the right direction. So if you take a look on the left side of the screen, obviously, you're looking at our ELA scores. There's a couple ways that you could break these numbers down. You'll see the light green represents the sixth grade. So if you take a look at a three-year span, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, you'll, you'll notice our sixth grade, right, as a whole, our teachers, our curriculum, our instruction, you know, thirty-seven to forty-two to forty-four, right? So we're moving in the right direction, we feel, in the sixth grade. This data can be seen in different ways. You also could look at it through a cohort. So if you look at the sixth grade in twenty twenty-three, they become the seventh grade in twenty twenty-four. So from thirty-seven percent up to forty-five percent from sixth grade to seventh grade. They then become the eighth grade in the dark green in twenty twenty-five, and, and we saw a decrease in their performance. We saw thirty-nine percent. So this, this helps us and informs us of where we need to focus. And I think that's going to be the focus of our presentation. Mr. Bass will, will get into is kind of where we've identified some needs, but also where we see some strengths. So certainly, one of the strengths that we see is that, is that growth in the sixth grade, our seventh grade as, as well, forty-eight, forty-five, forty-nine percent. Again, moving towards that, that fifty percent threshold, which we want. Eighth grade, again, if you look, fifty-three, thirty-nine. That, that group of eighth graders presented some, some significant challenges, you know, as a whole. That, that was a, a class that did face some challenges and, and could be a, a factor in their performance. But if you take a look at the math scores, what we're really excited to take a look at was the seventh grade performance in twenty twenty-five, forty-three, which is up from thirty-four percent the year before. You'll hear more about that today when we get into kind of building thinking classrooms. That was a new approach that our math teachers took last year. And, you know, we're seeing really great results, and we're trying to work that through the different grade levels as well, because we definitely saw some good performance there. Again, looking at it across grade, our sixth grade in math, twenty-two percent to thirty-one percent to thirty-four percent. So again, moving in the right direction in sixth grade in math, seventh grade, forty-one, thirty-four, up to forty-three. Again, that obviously can be looked at in a lot of different ways. If you try to see the positives in it, but also understanding that this data does show some areas that we, we need to focus on, and we need to break down and look where we can improve our instruction, improve the performance of our students. And that, Mr. Bass will, will show that in his portion again.
Can you tell me what positives I'm seeing from this data?
Yeah. So like I said, I, I think we're seeing, if you, if you look on the math side, the light green, year twenty twenty-three, we only had twenty-two percent of our students at or above benchmark. As we moved to twenty twenty-four, sixth grade, curriculum, instruction, kind of what they're working, we moved to thirty-one percent. From twenty twenty-four to twenty-five, we moved from thirty-one percent to thirty-four percent. So although maybe not the growth we'd like to see, it is trending in the right direction. We are moving in the right direction.
But that also means like sixty percent of your kids are there, Jen?
Oh, you can go there. I'll go after.
And sixty percent of your kids are not even reaching benchmark.
That's true.
So I don't see how I'm seeing anything positive here. I'm just saying. I mean, maybe you do, but I don't see anything.
Yeah. Well, I think when, when we look at it, like I said, it, it's very helpful for us to identify. There is no sugar coating. There are sixty percent of our students that are continuing to struggle. There's a lot of factors that go into that. And that's what our job is, to kind of design an improvement plan to kind of address some of those factors, whether it be the social, emotional, whether it be the curriculum, whether it be the it be the social emotional, whether it be the curriculum, whether it be the instruction, whether it be the food insecurity, whether it be the attendance. Um, those are all the factors that we're working on, and and that's, you'll see those in our school improvement plan, I think, um, a real a real plan to try to move the continue to move these numbers in the right direction so we get, we flip that number.
Jim?
I'm actually literally here, um, yeah, um, I'm actually literally here, um, these students are earning these grades at a certain important time, and these eighth graders are now in high school, so Mr. Brown and administration, you can watch these kids, the ninth grade class, because you could see in eighth grade, their scores are low, so everybody's in the ninth grade class, and I just want to keep track of them um to make sure that, you know, they're not being left behind because at a rate below fifty percent. I don't know, are they reading at what grade level is that? Sixth grade, fifth grade? I don't know, and that is not fair to those students. Our goal should not be fifty percent, our goal should be getting higher than fifty percent, and I know we need to make small steps, but it's not fair for the students, and we can't just evaluate it. Um, um, and this is just one data point. Um, so, very, very upset, um, and I'll and um, I don't know what we're going to do. I look forward to hearing your plan on how to achieve, um, you know, and accelerate this growth, but um, maybe if the board, if the will of the board, maybe we can have them come in um again, like later, um, you know, like maybe in that April timeframe.
Sean, you all set, Jim?
Mm-hmm.
Sean, you have a question?
Yeah, I I I don't like to spin that pile on, but um, I I'll agree, this is super concerning. I know that I I read a research that shows that students are behind uh leaving eighth grade, the likelihood of them catching up by the time they finish high school is very slow. So this is very concerning to me, especially the math numbers. I mean, you tell me that seventy-eight percent of our students are not meeting benchmarks in sixth grade math in twenty twenty-three. I know we're seeing improvement, um, but the fact that we're still at thirty-four percent, twenty twenty-seven percent of those students in eighth grade, which were that same cohort, are 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 not meeting benchmarks. The numbers are up technically, but still super concerning. Um, my other good question is, how does, how do we compare uh against the state? I see that in the fifth presentation around SAT scores, PSAT scores, they do have comparability with the state, but I don't see that in the S back scores.
Peter, do you have any answers?
We're below the state.
Did you hear, Sean?
I I did, and I mean, obviously, that's concerning, but below, and these levels are below, it's depending on how far below it. Uh, do we know what the averages uh in the state are, uh comparable comparable?
Yeah, that that's when in our dashboard, and be happy to share that specific information with you.
Thank you.
All right. We can take a.
Mitch has a question.
Yes.
Is is there a a goal, what what percent are you looking to achieve here?
We're hoping to have, we're hoping, our goal this year is to get our students to increase five percent across the board, and achieve achievement. Now, we would love to see much higher than that, but based upon our our school leadership team and the the plan that we've set forth, our goal is we want to see at least five percent in each grade level, meeting benchmark.
Okay.
Increase for this year.
Thank you.
I I think the other, um, you know, I had, we had talked about being a a singular data point. We also have other data points that are showing some positive signs. We have an iReady math program, Lexia, um, so looking to see how they're performing earlier in the year to hopefully move that that needle like towards the end of the year. So if we take a look at the next slide, Mark? So this is a slide that that takes a look at those students who are approaching benchmark, right? So those students who we feel are are close. Um, and so when you look at that, each, if the S back score is broken down into a four-point scale, within each point, there is a a low-scale score and a high-scale band, right, two bands. Um, and so if we take a look, we have fifty percent of our students who are in that upper band, that higher level, which would mean they are closer to meeting that goal, okay? They're closer to benchmark. So in both math and LA, we have fifty percent or over a hundred students who we believe are right there, who are 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 at that higher band and meet re getting close to reaching that uh benchmark score of a three or above. Um, so again, that that, as we look at the data and who we're focusing and what we're looking at, we do see signs that, um, you know, this is a a group of students who who are right there, and and we hope to to move them this year, um, through, again, through a lot of different approaches. Um, the academic piece obviously being being key, but there's a lot of other pieces that go into uh the overall student that I think, you know, we're we're going to address in our plan as well.
And can you talk about the fifty percent that our low-scale score?
Mm-hmm, yep. So so those, again, that's just showing us where, when we look at, you you want to see, when you see approaching, what does that truly mean, right? Like, are we close or we not close? And and that this is telling us that half of our students are are close, and half of our students are going to need um a a more acceleration. All right, Mark, the next slide. And this, again, just is um kind of the overall. You can take a look and see by grade, uh, the percentage that did not meet, that approaching, that are meeting, and then exceeding. And so if you read across the scale, um, you can see by grade level, and then on the bottom, you have your grand totals uh by grade. So again, data points in a lot of different directions. This certainly without a doubt shows us, um, that we have a lot of work to do, and we will work to address that.
All right, as we look back to twenty-four, twenty-five, so these are the action steps that we we were looking to do with further expand our implementation, supportive building thinking classrooms in math classes. I know that's uh probably an approach that you've been hearing about from the elementary levels. Sorry. Oh, we have one more slide, NGSS, I apologize, I jumped. As you as as you heard, our eighth grade uh was was impacted in many ways last year, um, and this is not the direction you wanted to see this trend go, uh, but you will hear about how we intend to support our students in making increases in NGSS this year. All right, so uh, eighth grade last year was a little lower, we were down to thirty-eight percent, down from forty-four percent the the previous year, and down a bit from that uh layer. So again, uh, opportunities for improvement, and and we're gonna, we're getting after it. Thank you, Mark. Next slide. All right, so looking back to twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, a few of the highlights I want to pull out from our action steps, we were building thinking classrooms was something that we were uh investigating, and and our seventh grade team um determined that they wanted to get into it further, so we supported them in that. And the outcome from them working with that was, we saw that the the rough cohort data from grade six in twenty-four, twenty-five to grade seven, uh, uh, I'm sorry, the twenty-five, twenty-six, what's, that's incorrect here, that's a typo on my part. So from twenty-three, twenty-four to twenty-four, twenty-five, because I'm I'm not, it's not the future yet, uh, showed a twelve-point increase for students scoring at or above benchmark. That's the kind of growth you want to see. Um, this has led us this year to further expand our professional development in building thinking classrooms and uh under the the guidance and leadership of Caitlin Crowley, we've had teachers go out to um see Peter Lilndahl, who wrote the book on building thinking classrooms, visit other um schools at the middle school level that are implementing this approach um to to learning, as well as having uh an expert come and and visit us multiple times, including tomorrow, uh, he'll be with us up here in Nobily. All right. Another thing that we did last year, we we were, we were hoping that our continued use of Dreambox for all students would have a positive impact. What we found was that while it it, for those students that engaged with it, there may have been some growth, it did not meet our overall needs. As as Mr. Dale mentioned, we need to know far sooner than S back some of the data that where our students are performing. Now, the S back interims can give us a a bit of a sense of where that is, but we we realized we need something that will give us much more real-time data and actual data on how we can plan and adjust instruction. All right, so this year, uh, we are no longer using Dreambox, we moved to something called iReady, and iReady allows us to test and assess all students three times in a school year. We did one at the beginning of the school year, um, we're doing one in the middle, and one at the end, and that gives us a a sense of where they are, a very good sense of where they're achieving, what their levels are, and how to a- adjust that instruction. It also tells us um which students need intervention beyond the regular classroom instructions. While we're adjusting that regular classroom instruction, it also gives us a good data point on how to uh intervene for those students who need it. Third piece, uh, we 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 knew last year, we we identified the fact that we needed a progress monitoring uh tool for language arts as well, uh, because we, Lexia Rapid was no longer available to us, so we were able to identify something called Common Lit as a a monitoring tool and resource. We're piloting that resource this year, uh, and and we're evaluating currently, and we're we're already in December, and um with with the support and uh guidance of Amory Mancini, uh, we're continuing to make uh steps in that area to make sure that we are having the the best tool for our teachers. Now, I just want to emphasize, our teachers are working their tails off, and I believe that that um with the resources that are that are tailored for our students' needs, having that that data um and and the professional development will will help them um use their their passion, their work ethic to have uh even better results for our kids. All right, so that was last year. As we look forward to this year.
This is a question.
Okay, um, I'm kind of new to this, so, but are Dreambox, iReady, and Common Lit, are those tests that the kids take? Is that what that is?
So iReady, I'm glad you asked the question, because I didn't explain it thoroughly enough. Um, iReady is is a, is it online um assessment tool that all students use, all right? So they take that three times in a year. In addition, it's also a personalized learning tool. So students, ideally, if they can spend thirty to forty-nine minutes on that in a week's time, that personalized learning, it is shown, research has shown that it has enhanced the achievement levels on the summit of tests. So that's iReady. Dreambox was something that we used last year, that was personalized learning, that's, we moved away from that because it wasn't giving us that that assessment data that we were looking for. Common Lit is also a resource for the curriculum, but it it gives um a beginning, middle, and end-of-year assessment that we give to all students.
One is for math and one is for ELA.
Correct. Yeah, the iReady right now we're using for mathematics, Common Lit is for English language arts.
Yeah, you're the chairperson, so I'm always going to ask about going through you first. So does that tell you, say, for math? I'm an engineer, okay? Um, the specific areas that um kids are having trouble in, say, geometry or trigonometry, things like that?
It breaks it down, it breaks it down to the standards, to the C standards, and it will say, like, these standards, the student is exceeding at grade level or above grade level, or these standards, the students are below grade level, and how far below grade level. It also, um, so after that first diagnostic in the beginning of the year, um, it places each student on an individualized, like, lesson plan. Um, so one student will be working on those standards to fill those gaps, and then some students are working on different standards, um, to kind of bring them to grade level. But then the the teachers can also assign lessons, um, so say they're doing um ratios and proportions, and if iReady has a lesson, um, like a sixth grade grade, you know, lesson that coincides with what they're doing in the class, they can use that to support. Um, they've also assigned things like uh prereq skills that every student should have, but, you know, they might see that in this class, thirty percent are missing that prereq, so I can assign that lesson to that thirty percent or the whole class. Um, but the the research does show that thirty to forty-nine minutes a week um correlates to an increase on those scores. But we, you know, we're assessing them in the fall and in the winter, and then the spring to see kind of in the year their growth as well.
So, all right, okay. So that's an assignment given to the kid or to the to the student to do something on their own. Is that right? Like the thirty-nine minutes you talked about?
That's independent practice.
They, at the beginning of the year, they started, some grade levels started assigning it as homework, um, and they kind of usage wasn't to the standard that we wanted. Uh, so now we're providing class time for students to complete that as well. Uh, and I know that our sped department has access to the res- to the data as well. Um, so our sped department is also linking to the the data and um to their, to those students' IEPs and their goals um as well. Uh, and I know that they're working on it in their resource classes, they're working on it in their intervention courses, they're working on it in their power-up courses, they're working on it in their math classes, um, and at home, but usage has increasingly provided.
And teachers are getting a lot of professional learning about how to analyze the data and what to do about it, and even for their own teaching and intervention. So it's really helping in a lot of ways.
Some stuff goes out.
Yeah. And then Sean.
So, Peter, you know, um, I have utmost confidence that you're going to be able to pull this through, you know, based on the experience, like, from when my kid was, like, at your school at Cutler, so I have all the faith that you and your team will be able to, like, change the trajectory um of this, um, as we're going through the budget process, right? Like, make sure you put in for what you need, whether it's tutors, parents, teachers, whatever, we'll try to support, right? Um, and also, um, I know the space constraint is an issue, um, and I know the time schedules. So when you come back in that spring timeframe, let us know, is that, like, double block really impacting the student's ability to learn based on what you and your team thinks, right? So that maybe we need to readdress that, um, and things like that. So think out of the box, let us know, sometimes it's going to be a challenge, and maybe we can't change everything, but just let us know, because um I feel like we're heading down, and I know some of the changes were, like, when we changed the blocking, so I'm not asking you to answer that now, but like in three to four months from now. Um, and like I said, anything you need, we're here to help. And now it it worked.
All right. I'll call on you, Dr. A, after Sean.
That's fine, I don't need to say anything now.
Okay. Sean?
Yeah, sorry to interrupt you, the question, I I have two questions. I I'm a newer board member, so I don't have all the details, but is there a reason, I know iReady provides ELA data as well, is there a reason we're not utilizing the ELA assessment tool?
So we look, yeah, we we looked at um the research, and Common Lit had the highest readings, um, so that's where we decided to start. Um, but it's not the only, a- as you mentioned, Sean, iReady also um has a a language arts component, and uh we are exploring additional resources in case Common Lit is not working for us. So as a matter of fact, we're we're taking a look at one uh tomorrow, and then um another one in January at the TLI Day.
All right, and then within Common Lit, so this is a two-part question. Within Common Lit, I know that in addition to the general information they provide, they do provide information on exile levels. Within Common Lit, in addition to the general information they provide, they do provide information on Lexile levels. And in iReady, they provide information on Courthouse. Are those measures, things that you are using to help prepare and understand where we are on the next step?
Yes, that's exactly what we're using that data for. As a matter of fact, as we, as we assess, you know, as we look at the district assessment calendar this year, we identified times for data teams to meet and review the data as soon as possible after those assessments were given. Whether they are S-Back IEBs or whether it's Common Lit data or iReady. So that, so that we can analyze that data and then make instructional decisions from there.
Okay, perfect, thank you, appreciate that.
Peter, how long did you use Dreambox for?
It was a few years.
Yeah? Seven years. And when you talk about professional development, can you give me ideas on professional development for the teachers?
So I'm actually going to ask Caitlin to speak to the math professional development because she's been intricately involved with it.
For the math professional development, we've been working with Thomas Nobley. He's a consultant that has been giving us building thinking classroom support. But he's also worked with iReady as well as Illustrious Math, which is a curriculum that we are piloting this year. He has worked with us for the two full PD days in August and November. He worked with us four school days last year. He came in and pushed into classrooms. He worked with our students, he modeled building thinking classrooms for our teachers. And then he co-taught with our teachers, he observed our teachers teach, and really mentored them through that teaching practice. He'll be with us tomorrow at the middle school for the full day. He has another TLI where he's with us for the full day. And he's also working with us on the March PD. He's also worked with the high school as well. So we're trying to bring that practice to the high school since it's had such success at the middle school. We've also had time to see Peter Lujenthal.
Peter Lujenthal, yeah.
I always mess up his last name, who wrote the book, Building Thinking Classrooms. He just came out with a six to eight task because the students do thinking tasks at whiteboards. He just came out with another book, which we provided to all the middle school teachers. It was just released in October, so we just got, received the book. And we also observe schools that are using it and have been using it a little bit longer than us. So that's all the Building Thinking Classroom PD that we are receiving. And then we have for two TLIs and the end-of-year PD, we have Robin Moore from Illustrious Math that will be coming in because we're piloting that curriculum to give us more support and guidance and how to mesh Building Thinking Classrooms with IM, with iReady. There's been a lot of targeted math PD this year and towards the end of last.
And we're really, we started K-5. You know, the board was really interested literacy initially and then math. But we thought of, you know, we really need to do this more comprehensively, K-8, and even looking at some of the same programs along that continuum, K-8. So we are doing all that work right now and feeling that sense of urgency to do it that way and do it well, so.
And I can't speak to the Common Lit.
Yes, the Common Lit also spent, we have an online trainer. And she has spent time both at TLI days and at Professional Lowman days introducing and reinforcing the methods of Common Lit, how to access the resources, and how to take the data from those beginning-of-year and middle-of-year and end-of-year assessments and make it actionable to what's happening in the classroom. So we've had multiple sessions with this trainer as well.
How did you come up with using Common Lit?
It was actually something that, we had a couple of teachers who were using the free version as a resource suggest. Anne Marie Mancini researched it and had very high ratings.
I gave a question, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, it's about the science scores. I don't know if they're kind of similar in terms of success rate or meeting standard rates, the math scores. Initially, I was thinking, well, maybe that's because of the quantitative nature of science. But maybe that's not necessarily the case. I was wondering if the same, similar students struggle with both math and science at this level? Or are there different reasons that might account for the lower performance in science?
Yeah, I think that there is a correlation. I haven't done a deep, specific dive to see, is it one-to-one in terms of who pere well or didn't pere so well on the NDSAs as opposed to the math S-Back. What I will say is that I believe that the method for accelerated achievement is the same in terms of allowing for a shift in professional development in our instructional practices, but also instituting interim assessments. For science, we're doing it three times a year at each grade level. This is, it's not something that we have done previous to this. So looking at that data and analyzing it as those assessments are given and making adjustments there. In addition to that, I mentioned the professional development. We, our teachers of this summer, all of our science teachers, were enthused, they got on board with something called, it's an adult development in the science notebooks, it's called sketchbooking. I think I've got that right.
Sketchbook.
Sketchnotes, sketchbooks. And they, to a person, said it was the best professional development they've ever had in science. And the impact that they are seeing is it allows students to combine, to have some choice in how they're taking notes. They teach them various ways that they can organize their notes, but it allows them to have a combination of drawing, which we know impacts the brain differently than just reading and writing, and in combination with text and recording text to predict their, what they think is going to happen with something in science, but also record their learning and really integrate it in them. So we're starting to see some of the results from that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I think there used to be a science coordinator or a science coordinator, and there's no longer.
So we have a STEM coordinator. I mean, this is a math coordinator. But I will just, I would advocate, you know, Jen, you talked about something I'd love to see. I'd love to see a, I haven't talked to Susan Oxon about this, but-
That's okay.
I would love to see a science coordinator because I think a STEM coordinator's job is spread too thin. And honestly, an English Language Arts coordinator to really help guide what is happening in our Language Arts classes would be incredibly helpful.
Mitch?
What's the turnover of middle school students each year?
That's a great question, Mitch. You know, having worked at many schools across the district, I know that the trans, the transancy of our population from school to school is, can be higher. I'm going to guess and say it's double digits, but that's something I'd love to get back to you with.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
That can also very much vary based on the time of the year, right? And when you ask that, because when we were originally planning to start with the sixth grade, there were three hundred and forty-three students. It went down to, I want to say, three oh-six, and it's back up to about three twelve. So it's just a matter of both coming in and out and things like that. So these are all factors.
Oh, yeah. I was going to save most questions for the embolism since we're on it. We were talking about ELA. So we're still using workshop model, correct, as for, like, Teachers College for core ELA in middle school?
So there are still some components of that which are still existing. I will tell you that tomorrow, at tomorrow's TLI, we are going to take a look at the wit and wisdom equivalent for middle school. So our teachers are going to be introducing some resources there, and Anne Marie Mancini will be there to help guide that discussion.
All right.
Because, as I mentioned before, you know, it's not that our teachers aren't working hard. We just need to give them the tools and the resources that will help them get our kids to where they need to be.
Yeah, yeah, no, I agree. I'm just wondering what, I mean, I know that, I was kind of saying that because I know that we're moving away from that as a district. What's the timeline when we might be, like, piloting new curriculum for ELA? Is there a timeline on that yet?
Would not surprise me to see it in process for next year.
All right.
And then since you did that a little bit with the-
We, yeah, we pilot the resource of Common Lit this year. I will tell you that it's mixed reviews from us. At this point, we thought it would give us better tools for intervention because that's really specifically what we were looking for, some resources to guide our students to receiving tier-two and tier-three interventions. We're finding that it hasn't proven to be what we thought it was going to be. So glad that we piloted it and just say, hey, this is what we're going to use coming in. But again, with great help from Anne Marie, she's really an expert in this area, looking at other resources that may meet the needs of our students or allow our teachers to meet the needs of our students.
All right. One thing, I mean, I brought this up, you know, in various things in the past, but do we know, I mean, do we interact with other local schools to see what other schools really feel curriculum's working great? And obviously, we have different staff with different backgrounds, so maybe it won't work as well. But do we, do we have that kind of communication to try that so we don't have to reinvent the wheel?
So we have been going out to other schools. And as Caitlin mentioned, we had our math teachers go up to East Hartford to see what's working for them. Again, Anne Marie has been fantastic in sharing data and reaching out to other districts where, for example, what we're going to look at tomorrow, here's, she gave us examples of districts where it's working and how they're utilizing it. For example, I believe it's Region Seventeen, Hammond-Killingworth, is utilizing the wit and wisdom model in combination with iReady for ELA. And they've seen some nice gains since they've been utilizing both those together. So that's something that we'll consider.
All right. Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And I know that, you know, that I've seen some surveys from staff, like, how they feel about certain curriculum. And I know we've got to get the staff on board with things as well. So maybe showing everybody how well it can work, hopefully that'll, that'll work in time. So the other thing I was going to ask, which is kind of related to everything that we've gone over, but since it seems that core instruction's not really, we're not really achieving the goals that we really want to see. I mean, because ultimately, we want to see, like, seventy-five percent of our kids meeting standard, right? Or something like that.
We'd love to see a hundred percent, but I think, you know, with the state's performance index, yes, we're looking to, if we can get to seventy-five as an alliance district, I think we'd be blowing the doors off, and that would be awesome.
Yeah, no, I know. So, I mean, since, you know, we're largely only, like, forty to fifty percent, you know, reaching, that are at grade level, what do our, you know, our supplemental instruction, what does that look like? Like, tier-two instruction or just supplemental instruction in the classroom? And is there anything else that we should be doing in the supplemental? So not, not just looking at, you know, at that sixty percent as, like, we'll worry about that for next year's class, the sixty percent this year, what are we doing for them?
So as Caitlin mentioned, we're using the iReady data and the personalized learning to help those students who need that supplemental instruction. With regard to language arts, we are attempting to use that resource. It is giving us the broad picture in terms of where students are achieving, beginning, middle, end-of-year. We're struggling a bit when it comes to the specific resources. We'd like to see them be more tailored. I will say that beyond tier-two and tier-three, we are using structured literacy, aspire structured literacy for special ed students, a large portion of special ed students in sixth grade who need that explicit reading instruction to get them up to where we'd like them to be for regular classroom instruction.
Yeah, so we-
We're not there yet.
Yeah, no, I know. So do we have adequate staffing to support kids with that tier-two and tier-three instruction? Showing the obvious need, you know, of five hundred students in the middle school.
Sure, sure. We saw promising trends, and we had the-
High dose tutoring.
High dose tutoring in mathematics. That would be wonderful to have. I'd love to see that in ELA as well. I know that the budget is a finite number, but-
Well, so getting to the budget, which we'll be talking about as a board later, you know, there was comments that, you know, why are we spending all this money on tutoring? Is it really doing anything for us? And I think that now we have data to show that it was doing something for us. And our grades, you know, or our scores have dropped since. So we have, I mean, whether causation and correlation and all that, if there is a correlation, it would be great to have data on that and justification behind the need for high dose tutoring or more tutors. So I would love to see that, you know, going forward another month or so. You know, some real numbers to say, you know, when it comes time to speak to the taxpayer, say, look, we do need some additional funds to support students. And this is, you know, where the rubber meets the road. This is, you know, this is what's happening by not supporting students well enough in the supplemental interventions.
We certainly saw that, that data prove itself out with some in-house tools that we had through that grant. I don't think that, because it came to an end well before the testing window came, I don't think we saw the true representation of the growth that we were seeing in the Summit of S-Back tests. So we can certainly provide that.
All right.
You'll sit?
Yeah.
All right. So next slide, Mark, please. And I will say that through your questions and our conversation, we have really spoken to each of these things. Let me just take a look here. You know, the district priorities and our school action steps are very closely aligned. You know, we talked about looking for improved resources, actionable data, assessing and monitoring student growth and impacting instruction. That's exactly what we're doing across, particularly in mathematics and language arts. And we're taking steps in science to do the same thing. As what, you know, the engaging student-centered instruction, that is our Building Thinking Classrooms. You know, this year, we're in the middle of a self-study as we look at our NYPD methods. Our NYPD coordinator, Kathy Wilson, is working with each grade level and discipline to review our units of study to make sure that those are up to snuff and really engaging for our students with that real-world application and connection. As we look at, I mentioned the district assessment calendar. You know, we're assessing with those tools, the iReady, the Common Lit. We're implementing on a specific timeline, the S-Back IEBs for three in English Language Arts, four in mathematics, and three in science across all grade levels. And Social Studies is getting involved with the Language Arts as well with the research S-Back interim assessment. So, and we've aligned our data team meetings to fit with the assessment so that we can analyze that data, the teachers can analyze that data and make those changes in the classroom. And then as we identify those students who are operating, who are in need of additional support, that intervention, we're collecting that data and then saying, okay, these students are really falling really short. So who, who needs that tier-two? And if they're in tier-two already, they've been, they've been in this for eight weeks. Is it having an impact? If not, do they need tier-three? And we're able to have those meetings and get students placed.
How often do you have data team meetings?
How often? Every TLI day, pretty much.
How often is that?
Almost, almost monthly.
Monthly?
Yeah. And there, and I will say, we, thanks to Samantha's hard work, we were able to, for our core teachers at least, while it's not a true, what we would term as a common plan, at each grade level and discipline, we were able to set it up so that the math teachers at each grade level, the science teachers at each grade level, social studies teachers at each grade level, and the Language Arts teachers at each grade level all share a planned time that's at the same time. Now, while, as, while it's contractual, we as administrative- Now, while as it, while it's contractual, we as administrators can't say, you need to do X, Y, and Z during that planned time in terms of a data team. But I can tell you that we have many.
Calm, right.
We have many collaborating during that time and taking advantage of it. So while it's not an official data team, we really have some good work happening.
Mitch?
I, I would assume during the course of normal teaching, the teachers give exams to these students and should have an idea as to how they're progressing and it shouldn't wait until we have one of these, uh, programs come up to find out how the kids are really doing. Don't the teachers really know upfront what's going on?
So I would say that the teachers have a, a good idea based upon classroom assessments and our curricular assessments of where they believe students are achieving. But somewhere there's a disconnect and, and what they're seeing and what we're being, we're, we're, um, what we're giving them to use as resources to have that impact that they need to. So, um, I would, I would say that what we see in a report card can sometimes, um, differ than what we see in a somewhat of SBACK test. Because there, there are a number of factors in that, right? Some, some students. You get to, to May, uh, they may, they may choose to perform and, and work hard on an SBACK test. Others don't. And, and I would say at the middle school level, sometimes that can be a real challenge, getting them to, to buy into the motivation to sit and perform a test, which honestly has nothing to do with the report card. So it, it's, it's, it's a great question, um, and I don't have a very specific, uh, great answer to give to at this point other than, other than to say, I believe that our teachers do have a handle on where our students are struggling in particular. But we need to do a better job of giving them really specific steps based upon our assessment data to say, yeah, I know they're struggling, but look, I need, I need that assessment beyond my, my general classroom assessment to say, here's where I need to be teaching them specifically.
Go ahead, Mitch.
Okay, I don't want to take anyone else's time here. Do, do the teachers ever offer extra help after school?
As a matter of fact, um, beyond offering it on their own time, um, when our, our Title Ones, when our Title One funds are accessible, we have, uh, after-school learning help. We have tutoring and we also have homework club.
Okay, thank you.
Do a lot of the students participate?
So I'll let Ms. Singh can speak to that because she really helps to coordinate it.
Yeah, um, so basically, uh, what happens is the counselors and the teachers make recommendations for those students to be a part of the after-school learning center, um, specifically. In previous years, we had at one time fifty-six students. It does, there is a little bit of an ebb and flow to it because sometimes students will go out of it. If they're, they start to improve and don't necessarily need it anymore so that we have room for more students. Because we really like to keep those groups at eight students roughly per tutor, just so that they're getting that help that they need. Last year, unfortunately, the Title One funds got held up, um, longer than we would have liked. So we didn't get to start it till later in the year, but we were actually able to provide it for not only math in ELA, but science, world language, um, and social studies. We were able to get teachers who could, um, assist in those subject areas. So that is something that we will look to do again because it is helpful to those students who are struggling in other areas as well.
Do you have the funds this year to do that?
So all of the paperwork is in on our part. It's just waiting for the funds to be distributed.
It has to be approved at the state level. That's what we're waiting for.
So the, one of the problems that I'm guessing is you're not getting the money till late in the school year.
Yeah.
And, okay.
Yeah, so.
They weren't even released until just recently, so.
Yeah, so two years ago, we were able to start it right in around October, November, which was great because that was the end of our quarter one. So we really had a lot of information on, you know, the students, um, and last, the last year and then this year, we're kind of at a, a holding pattern with it until we have the, um, the funding.
Adrian has a question. Jen?
Yeah, um, so one thing, the science coordinator, um, I didn't actually know that we lost a science coordinator. When did that happen?
We didn't lose one, but I would, I, again, I haven't talked to Ms. Os about this. I would argue that Caitlin being the STEM coordinator, coordinator, science, technology, engineering, and math coordinator.
It's a lot.
It's too much for one person.
Part-time as well. I'm not.
And part-time, yep.
Yeah, so, um, one thing I think we maybe need to have a bigger discussion about coordinators in general. It seems our district has moved away from them for some reason, um, and probably, and largely probably a financial thing because we went through all those zero budget year increases that, um, that a lot of the community doesn't understand that when you write zero, but everybody has an increase, we've decreased services. So I, I would like to have a, like a bigger discussion about coordinators and, and is that the way we want to go forward without curriculum coordinators? Because I, I hear, I mean, and maybe we'll hear this soon from the, um, from the high school that there might be a disconnect with some things because we don't have any staff to actually look at the curriculum going from seventh to eighth to ninth to tenth, um, you know, and specifically like in math, you know, math and science. So, um, I mean, do you, do you see curriculum coordinators as being essential, like additional curriculum coordinators?
I do. I, 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 we.
I mean, I know we need to have.
When we, when we had, um, Adrian McKenna as our six through twelve ELA coordinator, we were starting to, I was excited because we were starting to see some, um, real alignment.
And Carmine was humanities and you were.
That's right. Carmine was humanities.
Just really trying to do it all, but math is your thing.
So, yeah, that, to me, it's an essential missing piece.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, I think we need to explain to the community, you know, that, that our really low-budget increases for so many years did have an effect, um, on what we're offering our kids and that there's, um, you know, there's some difficulties and, and our, our curriculum, uh, delivery is maybe not as effective as it could be, um, if we had, um, more people to coordinate between years. So the second thing that hasn't really come up tonight in, and I've heard this, um, a lot, is the block scheduling and basically the, the difficulties with keeping a middle school child interested for an eighty-minute, um, block of time. And maybe we're missing, um, effective instruction just because of that. Because maybe you can keep a kid in, I mean, I'm sure lots of kids may, may get five minutes in, but maybe, maybe on average, you'd like to say fifty minutes or something like that. But what, what are the, what are, I mean, I've heard it said that it's hard to fix that block scheduling problem. We can't go back to the traditional scheduling, but what are the reasons that we can't go back to, you know, more traditional?
So I.
Don't you have a committee now? We do have that.
Yeah, so, yeah.
We have a committee now looking at that.
The board cast, uh, Dr. Mancini with, um, ensuring that we had a scheduling exploratory committee this year, and we've met several times. As a matter of fact, we met this afternoon. And what we are finding, uh, are the huge barriers are the number of teaching spaces that we have and the number of staff. Because we reduced, um, a- as you may know, when we moved from West Side and Cutler, we had two teams at each grade level at each school. So there were four teams across the grade level, across the district. And then we moved to three teams. So that was a reduction in the number of total staff that we had. So rather than having four ELA teachers at a grade level, we reduced to three right across the course. And that impacted, uh, that our ability to run a middle school, the traditional middle school schedule that we had before. That said, we are looking at options that, um, what we're, so, some of the, the, the non-negotiables, if you will, that were set forth from this committee were to find, um, class periods which are shorter than our, our current eighty-minute blocks. But also allowed for the core subjects to, to hopefully meet daily, um, without a reduction in, in overall minutes in instruction. Um, because as, as I'm sure you've heard, uh, when, when, when we went from the traditional middle school schedule, um, to our current schedule, there was a, a reduction in hours in the course subjects. Now, that's not to say that we didn't, uh, increase in, in some of the, um, the other areas that are, are essentials, if you will, or electives. So may look at it, but, um, the challenge, the, the two things we keep running up against are the number of spaces, the teaching spaces that we have and the number of staff. That's not to say that we have given up on, on looking for things that could improve our schedule. Uh, we saw a couple of options today and, uh, we're getting together, um, a- again, uh, with, with Anne Marie and then with the, the, the committee in January to see where we land for, for this year. You know, we're, we're up against a time constraint because we still have to start putting our, our, um, our pieces in power school well in advance to get our schedule to run. So once we get to, to February, it's really gets a little tricky to, to make any significant changes, but we continue to. We've, we've got a, a nice, um, range of, of folks representing, uh, disciplines and grade levels on, on the team, so.
Alright, well, I, I would, uh, another thing that I would be interested in hearing, um, because I've heard it said from other people, elected officials in the town, um, you know, we built all these schools. We were supposed to have huge staff savings. And they don't even think that we had any staff saving. We like savings and, and staff positions. And I know that we've lost a ton of staff positions, so it'd great, it'd be great to have an answer, um, when those questions come up. We did cut lots of staff positions and, um, maybe we cut too many and we need to figure other things out. We need to add some support. So, um, things that I think that we really need to kind of focus in on is what do we, what are our needs? Not just what's the budget we're living under today, um, because we have had, oh, like over ten years, it's less than two percent per year increases where the state as a whole has been about three percent per year over the last ten years. So, and, and these are some of the, these is, this is what got cut by those, those very small increases.
Point is, I'll take it. Thank you.
Jen?
So I'm probably like volunteering like high school students. I know, like, there's like tutoring, right, in some kids. Um, do they need to be like teachers? Or can it be like our Fitch Falcon tutors, right? Those are like the cream of the crop of our school and sometimes like even, you know, can they help out with sixth grade with like the simple math, have them come over? It helps with their community service, even though we're not requiring community service. But those are the kids probably focusing in on college, so that looks good. I mean, it helps not only them, but, um, you know, like the sixth graders. I mean, I'm pretty sure those kids are also capable of like tutoring seventh and eighth grades, so, um.
That was actually part of our, our model, um, a couple of years ago. Um, particularly with our, our homework help, uh, but we still need to have certified staff supervise. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but.
Free help?
For the lower class, right?
Did you try that before, Peter?
So a, a couple of years ago, we did have some students from the high school coming over in the afternoons and assisting our students.
And how did that all work out?
We saw some, at least anecdotal positive results.
And then you stopped?
Well, at this point, um, the, the fund, I, I want to say they were ARPA funds that we were using, the COVID ARPA.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, ARPA funds that we were using to.
Pay the certified staff, probably.
Pay the certified staff to supervise the high school students.
Ah, ah, okay, okay. Mitch?
Are, are you aware that through Electric Boat, through the Management Association, there are engineers willing to tutor? I used to do that for some of the Fitch High School students.
Yes, we are aware. We get the list every year and, uh, we, we do share it with, with parents as, as appropriate. Uh, we do get that update every year and it's a great resource.
Okay.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Um, on the handout, it says intubate the use of AI in language arts, social studies. So how, how do you plan on doing that?
So Dr. Kennedy has been, um, meeting with staff during TLI and professional development days to, um, to help them learn how to best use those, those resources to, um, make their, their work more effective. So he's been the one that's been spearheading that for us.
You, you shared the new AI policy with your staff?
Uh, yes, that's, that's, it's always top of mind because, you know, AI is tend to say, well, in front of us, it's a little scary at times as I, as you probably would agree. On to the Richmond Development Learning Committee.
Okay, alright. Um, so as you can see up on the screen, um, oh, hold on, go back up, Mark. This is just a very small snapshot of our climate survey data over the past three years. So the first one relates to students. As you can see, we have some, um, growth from twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four on students and how they feel about having a trusted adult in the building. I will say, and you'll see this in the notes for our, um, action steps, we have done our own caring adult initiative as well outside of the climate survey and have garnered a great deal of data from our students about how they feel within the building. Do they feel like they have a trusted adult and identifying who that trusted adult is? So Dr. Mari Redington met with admin, um, well, she meets with us a lot, but over the summer as well as at the start of the year to determine, um, some questions that we could ask students to get that data. So we already have some of that for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six year from our own survey. And then the second question relates to the parent, um, parent survey, so the opportunities for parental slash caregiver involvement. Um, as you can see, there was a slight dip in twenty-twenty-three to twenty-four, but back in an increase in twenty-four, twenty-five. And then, um, very happy to report that our staff, you're seeing an increase over the three years of them feeling like the professional development is related to their position. Um, as Caitlin and Peter mentioned, some of the professional development going on with language arts and science as well as math. I will also say, um, since starting in Groton and moving, uh, I also helped to oversee the paraeducators in our building. And one of the major things that has been implemented that I think is wonderful is called three-two-one insight. And this allows for, um, us to assign specific modules to the paraeducators and tutors and RBT, um, individuals, which relate to things like climate, um, you know, culturally inclusive classrooms, working with students with their needs, um, as well as, um, just an overall onboarding module. So I think that that has been extremely beneficial and I think that, uh, you can see some of that in the survey results as well.
How many people responded to the survey, uh, the parents? Do you know? And then the students?
Students, we had a great turnout, um, because they take it in class. We control, control that. So I, I think we were, uh, ninety percent or better on our student response. Uh, I think we were around, I'm guessing, I think it was like a hundred and eighty-something parents. And staff was roughly sixty-five percent or so participated.
Yeah, I don't, I don't recall exactly, um.
We, we can get you some.
Yeah, I can't, I've, I can't think of it off the top of my head. But I will tell you that the, the survey we just conducted in school for the caring adult, um, we had eight hundred and twenty students respond.
Wow.
Damn, it's good.
There you go.
Really kept pushing it out. So it gave us a lot of really, um, good information. So, Mark, if you move to the next slide. Um, so as Peter said, we have our district priorities for our SIP and then our action steps. So the first, um, the first box about, um, physical and mental well-being of staff and students, this kind of gives you a good picture of a lot of the things that we're doing. In addition to the safety drills and the working with the school-based health as well as, um, using our advisory time for things like Second Step as, and building, um, those relationships and implementing that curriculum. Another major thing that we do that, um, is so important to mention is the food pantry, um, especially in our current climate. So weekly backpacks go home with students with food in them. And then also during the holiday season especially, we're helping to provide, uh, meal boxes as well as, uh, working with United Way to provide gift cards to families for food. And, um, we're doing a similar thing, um, with Christmas time and, um, collecting funds from our staff and also providing, um, food. and also providing, um, food, um, and gift cards to the families as well. So, that I think is really important to note, um, because that has been something that has come up a lot more recently. In terms of the next box, I've already discussed this. We just, um, did our caring adult initiative. We plan to readminister it in February. So, for all, um, I want to say it was 100 and, I apologize, 100 and.
118 students?
Yeah. Who could not identify one caring adult in the building. We provided our staff with their names and staff members were asked to pick two students that they would have these purposeful interactions with, that's what we refer to them as. And we provided them a, um, pathways to support strategies, um, learning that we did, um, during one of our faculty meetings that was designed by one of our counselors, Kathy Pierce. So, it's having our staff members also see those students who, you know, you may think have that feeling of connectedness, but maybe they don't. And so, allowing them to have more of those purposeful check-ins. In terms of the next, um, couple of pieces, so Parent Square has been such a wonderful tool for us, not only to communicate, um, more easily with parents about, uh, community events and individual needs, but also because it will adapt to the recipient's chosen language. And then when they send it back, it adapts back to yours, which is a great tool. We have, um, a plethora of community events. We just had our Breakfast with Sam, Santa, which was very well attended. And one of the things that our PTO has done specifically is made everything free so that, um, family, families can attend. And as we did with Breakfast with Santa, it was $5 or, you know, and donate some food to our food pantry as well. And then, um, for encouraging students to use SEL strategies. So, we have our Second Step Advisory Lessons account.
Can you tell us what SEL means?
Sure, Social Emotional Learning.
Okay.
So, our Second Step is a curriculum that we have created a schedule based on. And there are different lessons that the advisory teachers do on Wednesdays, um, with the students. We have the quarterly SOAR meetings. I want to just mention with these, um, especially as it relates to Sback. We do, um, one of the SOAR meetings in particular is a celebrations meeting. So, not only do we celebrate, um, the achievements of the students with attendance and other things, we celebrate the achievements of students on Sback. So, we do, uh, we provide certificates and recognition for students, um, who achieve or the benchmark at or above, or also students who hit their own individual growth targets. And believe it or not, they get so excited and very competitive with it. So, um, it's definitely been a really positive thing that we've done in the past couple of years. And then many of our grade six teachers are focusing on, um, the, in creating the inclusive and safe learning environment with different activities throughout the year. If you walk down the sixth grade hallway right now, there's gingerbreads, every gingerbread houses up everywhere on the lockers. Pictures of them, I should say, not random.
Does SOAR stand for anything?
Yes. Yep, so, safe, open-minded, accountable, respectful, and responsible. It is our school motto.
Can you say that again?
Yep. Safe, open-minded, um, accountable, respectful, and responsible.
We don't know if they rise first and then soar, or do they soar first and then they rise? Or maybe they do a little of both at different times.
And then, um, I believe this got cut off in the original presentation, so I apologize. I don't know if it's on the next page. Yes. No, it's not.
No, that's not.
Oh, okay. I apologize. So, um, the other piece that, um, we can get this to you.
Yeah.
The other piece is just about providing those opportunities for voice and leadership. So, as we mentioned already, we have the scheduling committee this year. We also have leadership, safe school climate, the individual team meetings that happen, um, daily at GMS. And just going through and talking about honor roll. We have student council, which is, um, a heavily sought-after club by our students. Many, many students want to be a part of that. Might have something to do with designing the dances, but, um, they do enjoy doing that as well.
It's open membership, anyone can join.
Yes, and it's open membership as well. And as Denise said, we have late buses, so it just offers our students so many opportunities to be a part of those after-school activities, which is great. And then, um, the last, uh, priority that you, um, can't see at this time is increased student and staff engagement by emphasizing the importance of daily attendance. So, as we said, that has been something that, um, has been a heavy focus as a district and as a school. And I wish Jamal Davis was here because he can talk, um, so much more eloquently about the data, um, that we have. But really, you know, just keeping kids in the classroom is something that as a school we have informally, um, really put into place and formally, um, and making sure that our students are not only getting the social emotional support they need in the classroom, but also getting them to school and keeping them, um, there. So, we've changed our whole motto with how we use our SEL tutors. We've been implementing training modules for, um, staff as they relate to tier one attendance. And, um, the school attendance team now meets weekly. And that includes admin, teachers, and, um, counselors and other support staff to look at that information. And as Mr. Bass said, our school secretary, Mr. Hastings, is doing a wonderful job of tracking all of that and giving us and providing us, I want to say weekly updates, it's like daily updates that he, um, provides to us.
Good.
Yeah, as admin, and it's been extremely helpful. And really, um, I will say one big change is keeping a better track of who's contacting when and what the result of that is, or if we're doing home visits. So, using those log entry features in Power School has been tremendous, as well as our own data sheets that, um, the attendance team and Jamal Davis have created, um, has been really helpful. And then, again, sounds simple, but when you see the students stop at the screens, they look at, to see who every month is achieving that high attendance at 95% or higher. And they make it, they make it competitive. Or they get mad if they don't see their name. And, um, so it's something that they, they'll even say to us, um, you know, I'm going to try to get on that board next month. So, I think it's just simple things like that.
And we have seen improvement from last year.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Oh, um, I apologize. So, if anyone has questions, happy to take them.
Questions? Nope. All right, well, thank you very much.
Thank you for your questions and for your support. Thank you. Can I, can I just take a five minute break?
Yeah. Five minute recess.
Yeah. Caitlin in the office?
Caitlin, call me again.
Okay.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
We will.
Thanks for him. I got a text from Sean, he, he can't get in, he keeps trying, try, try, and try.
Agenda number, but now we're going to hear from Fitch High School.
Recording in progress.
Okay, we're back from the recess at 7:50 and now we will hear from Fitch High School.
All right, well, thank you so much. We'll start with a round of introductions. I'm Matt Brown, Principal at Fitch High School. We'll go to my left.
Amy McKenna, Assistant Principal, Fitch High School.
Adam Diskin, Assistant Principal.
Carmy Hodge, Assistant Principal.
Caitlin Crowley, Assistant Principal.
All right, and Beverly, you had asked Peter, you know, what is about the school that, and I would say Fitch High School, what is about Fitch High School that, that makes us pretty passionate, I think, is, we have a diverse group of students wherein we have diverse group of opportunities. I think there's something for every student. There's a group for every student. There's clubs, activities for every student. And I, you know, I think our Falcon family, I think there's a lot of pride at Fitch High School. That makes great things happen. We have similar areas of struggle as, as the middle school, and we'll get into those as, as we get through this, this presentation. But talking in terms of our programming, we're very proud of the fact that we offer AP, ECE, IB, both that middle years program, the diploma program.
Can you say AP just for the audience?
Yeah.
Can you say what AP means, ECE means?
So AP is Advanced Placement Courses through a college board. ECE is Early College Experience, and then IB is International Baccalaureate, which we offer three different programs, the middle years program, which they finish, they start in sixth grade, finish in tenth. Diploma program is an eleventh and twelfth grade program, and the career program is also eleventh and twelfth grade. We have really built our pathways, so we have military science, we have medical field, educational field, engineering, and manufacturing, and we're looking to continue to grow that, but we want to grow it slow and make sure that we grow it the right way. And we're, we're super proud of the opportunities that we have through extracurriculars at Fitch High School, whether it's the arts, the athletics, and clubs and activities. Mark, can you put the slideshow up? While he's, don't.
He's behind you.
Well, can you put the slideshow?
The slideshow needs to up.
Thank you. The.
Mitch has a quick question.
Could you just quickly go through the difference between, I know what AP is.
Yeah.
My son took AP courses and get college credit for taking those. The difference between that, the ECE and IB?
So the ECE, you can get college credit as well, and we'll, we'll get into it in detail. I have a slide devoted for ECE. I have one devoted for IB and so forth.
Okay.
So I'll get, I'll get into it in a little more detail when we, when we get to there. But the career program is, is something fairly new to, to Fitch High School. In the career program, where they're, they're going to go into a specific field and, and not take as many of the IB courses, but they're, they're gearing to get ready to a profession that they, they want to get involved in. Another area on this first slide, our absentee rate is, is an area that we are very concerned about. The, the numbers have not recovered since COVID, and I think we are doing a, a good job as a team of, of addressing that this year. We took steps last year, but I think we're proven upon those steps, and we're going to get into that later on in the presentation.
The absentee rates, do you have it broken down by grade level, like grade?
Mark, it needs to go back a slide?
Just one slide. So 2023, we're at 25.8%, 2024, 24.9, and then it increased to 26.3% last year.
But I want to know, do you have it by grade level? Like, what's the absentee rate in grade nine, grade 10, grade 11, grade 12?
We do, we keep track of that at, at our school, and we post it at our school at a monthly level, and that's really what our area of focus last year was, was our daily rates, like attendance rates, like 92% of our kids are in school on, you know, for the month of, for a certain day and so forth. This year, we're focusing more on chronically absent students. So last year, the threshold, we were focusing on like 15, anything over 15%, and this year, we're really, any, any kid that's close to that 10% threshold are the ones that we're focused on. But Ms. Hodge is going to talk about that in some detail as we, as we move forward.
I hope so, because Mitch is terrible.
Okay, next slide. All right, so this slide shows both how many of our students reached benchmark on the left-hand side is our, our English classes, our evidence-based reading and writing on the SAT. As you can see here, in 2022, we're at 60% reaching benchmark. It dipped in the next two years to 55%, and we're back up to around 59% for this most recent year. And then in math, it was at 31% in 2022, rose to 40% for the 2023 year, down to 27, and then it's increased up to 32% for this year. Although the, the numbers, again, you know, like, we, we have similar struggles as the middle school with, with our kids reaching the benchmark. But I, I do want to, you know, I would argue, what it means to reach benchmark is that you're going, you're prepared to be successful with a C or better in a college-level class. So although 32% really doesn't look like, I'm talking specifically for math, 32%, we want that number larger. That's been a, a mission of ours, even back before COVID. That was my thesis, was working on how to get that, I mean, the number that we, we were striving for was 40% at that time. And we had reached it right before COVID, and in 2023, although 40% doesn't look like it's a great number comparable to the state and to, especially our, our DIRB, our district reference group, I am pretty proud of that number. Do I think that's where we want to stay? No, but I think that in the whole nation, we're, we're struggling right now with, with, especially instruction in mathematics. We have, I feel like some, some strong math teachers at the high school. I had a math background. Caitlin had, had the math background. So I do, I, I know the number doesn't look great, but, but there are, I think we are making some great, great strides in that area, and we're going to get into it a little bit more as we go through this presentation. Adrian?
I was just going to ask, what, so SATs are taken junior and senior year to some extent?
The, this is only showing their, their junior year SAT, the school day SAT that they took. Students have the opportunity to retake the test, and we, that's not included in this data. But most, you know, a lot of students that are planning on going into college will take it their junior year, and then at least one more time, if not more than, more than one more time. And then they can take the higher score of any other test that they got for each of the subject areas.
All right, so this is just kind of one snapshot.
This is one snapshot. This is the school day SAT that they took in March of last year.
All right, and then what, I know, so SAT is what, 800 for math and 800 for ELA, right? What, what actual number score is passing?
His benchmark, it's on the next two slides. So that's okay.
Do the students still take the PSAT, or they don't?
They do. So basically, what our students do, if we go over the next slide, you'll see a progression of our, our senior class right now, if that's okay. And then we can go back to that side if someone else has a question on it. But if you look at this, this slide is our actual senior class that took the March SAT last year that, that we were just looking at the benchmark scores for. They took the PSAT in the fall of 2022, their freshman year, in the spring of their freshman year, fall sophomore, spring sophomore year. So they've taken the PSAT five times, and then they take the, the real thing, the SAT in the spring of, of 2025, they did, and we, we keep track of it. And we, we share this with our students. We share this with our staff. And, you know, we, we want them to take great pride in it, and we want them to, to show growth. And basically, if you look at this slide right here, it's showing in red is, is Fitch High School. We scored at 418 when they were freshmen, the first time they took the test, which was four points below the state. And it's slowly risen, and we, we are now, you know, when we took the, the test in the spring, we scored two points higher than the state. Benchmark for English, this is evidence-based reading and writing, is 460. In Fitch High School, the average score was a 499 when they took the test.
Ian, you have a question? Ian, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I'll just, I want to circle back to, so we're, we're struggling this much to, to get to benchmark. I'm just, I'm confused as to like why we, we are not adding in those middle level courses as far as the honors for the upper levels or, well, something to kind of bridge the gap between the, the lower-end classes and the IDs and the APs.
I mean, honestly, I, I think that, you know, our offerings at those levels are the AP or the IB course. You know, when, when a kid is a freshman, they would take a, either the college-level course, or they'll take an honors-level course, same thing as sophomores. But as they get into AP and IB in eleventh and twelfth grade, to me, that really takes the place of the honors-level offering that they would have in those grade levels.
And benchmark is 460.
Yeah, and benchmark is 460. Our average is 499. For, this is evidence-based reading and writing. This is the English portion with, you know, and if you look on the right top right there, too, typical growth of a student taking the SAT is 30 points per year. In Fitch, we're on average by 44 points, which I think is pretty commendable for our, our staff and our students.
If I could just follow up, then, well, you know, this is, I don't know, I, I have a different take on it, just in, in my experience, you know, from what I do and specialize and stuff. I just feel like, you know, a graduated approach, like a, a ladder with more rungs would be a better way to go.
Okay.
But it's not the point of this conversation right now, but it is something I will continue to kind of advocate for. So, thank you.
Yep.
Sean?
Yeah, I just want to commend you guys. I think the fact that you're giving PSAT multiple times is, is a, a big reason why we're seeing an increase and getting, getting back to where we should be aligning with the state. I work with educational data for, for a living, and I know any increase is really hard to make. And I think the fact that you're giving your students, or our students, multiple opportunities to view the content on PSAT to prepare themselves, I think that's a great move. And I just want to commend you guys. I think you, I, I really like to see this, and I think the results are showing that we're making a positive progression.
Thank you. Okay, go to the next slide. All right, this is the same class, so this is our seniors this year. When they were juniors last year on the math part of the SAT, they scored a 479 for an average, which is seven points higher than the state average. If you look on the left-hand side of this graphic, you can see that when they came in as freshmen, they were scored at a 418 comparative to the state at 420. There was a dip their sophomore year. That dip was kind of specific to this class, and we, we've kept track the last two years, and that trend did not occur in the last two years when you look at their, their growth on PSAT for both our juniors this year and for our sophomores this year. But there was a dip, but then it was nice to see them recover the way they did in their junior year to get back up to 479. Benchmark, however, for mathematics is a 510, so we are well below what benchmark would be. And again, to reiterate that, benchmark means they're on track to, to earn a C or better in a college-level math course, is, is what college board would.
That dip occurred when we switched to digital.
Okay, I'll repeat.
That dip occurred kind of as we switched to digital.
So the SAT is now a digital test. If you guys recall, when you, when you all took the, the SAT, it was filling in those little bubbles. They no longer fill in the bubble, and that was the year that they stopped filling in the bubbles, and it was all computerized. So it probably, it may have taken a little bit for our kids to get used to that.
But I know recently you've done PD for teachers, too, around this area, so that they would be, you know, astute and be able to support kids.
Yes.
In this.
Yeah, that's a, a big push, and we'll talk about that in a little bit and the steps that we're taking.
Okay.
Yep. Any?
Sean, you have a question? You could, Matt, you could slow down a little bit, too.
Okay.
Sean?
Sean, do you have a question?
That's an open question.
Oh, it has.
Okay, maybe.
Okay, Mitch and Ian has a question.
I, I just wanted to make an observation. Something happened in 2023, because if you look, the absenteeism was high at both schools. The grades were, were lower. I'm not sure what happened in 2023. I wasn't a part of the board back then, but it's just an observation I noticed.
Yeah, I, you know, I think the further we, you know, and, and I hate using the word COVID and bringing that up, but it, it really did take our kids a long time to, and they still aren't back where they're supposed to be, but to recover from, from that, you know, '22, '23 were difficult years for our kids to get back on track, and I think that might have something to do with it as well. But.
Ian, you have a question?
Yeah, just one last one. Again, we're talking about struggling, we're, we're challenging, facing challenges, meeting benchmarks, and, you know, we're just not, I feel like, you know, we need, we're struggling to, to meet the benchmark of having students on track to make a C or better in school, then I don't understand why, why we have so much time and resources invested in IB and AP programming with, with, maybe honors might be a better way to go.
Well, I would, I would just, it's, it's a C or better in a college-level math, math course or English course. And again, obviously, we, we want all our numbers to, to be closer to that 510 number, but this is, this is a national, this is a state, and this is a, a whole, whole country issue is instruction in mathematics that, that we are pushing, and I feel like we are doing a better job than, than most schools in, in this area. But, but I also, you know, being a math major in college, math is not an easy subject in the college level. And to be honest with you, I, I had quite a few Cs, and I was pretty darn proud of those Cs in those math classes, because it, it's a difficult subject, especially at the college level. And I just want to, I want to really make sure everybody understands that, that this means a C in a college-level math class, which I think a lot of adults would, would, would agree that, that college-level math is, is very difficult. I also, you know, again, just like in English, typical growth is 30 points per year. Fitch showed an improvement of 47 points the last year.
All right, just to be back, well, one, one follow-up. As far as like math instruction goes and on a high school level, do you feel like the teachers have enough flexibility to kind of move back and forth between differentiated curriculum content? You know, so, again, my experience, like some students find more traction with like the older method of teaching math first, and others will find traction with the newer methods. Do, do teachers have the flexibility to kind of toggle between the, the various methods?
They, they definitely do, and we encourage that. We, you know, we encourage the professionalism and, and working together. I think our, our math department is a very collaborative group, and they're very creative and, and not doing the same thing over and over each day. I think it's mixed up well, and I think that works for the kids. Building Thinking Classrooms is something we're, we're now doing in, in, in the high school as well as the middle school, but it's not like building Thinking Classrooms every single day, every single moment. I think there needs to be a good mix of, of the instruction. I 100% agree with you, Ian.
Appreciate it, appreciate it. And one last follow-up. Mitch mentioned earlier about the EB tutors, and I know that there was a response, I, I think, with Peter, but saying that they provide the contacts for the parents to reach out. But is there, are there any efforts within the middle school or the high school where it's organized by the school to create a tutor group, then using the EB tutors that are offered, and try to like help bridge the gap between the parents and the tutors?
We, we did. I, I believe, I don't think this year currently we are, but I believe it was last year, we had naval, naval cadets come and help tutor our kids in Falcon Academy, and we would, you know, welcome that opportunity again, or working with EB. Um, and we would, you know, welcome that opportunity again, or working with EB. Uh, I think through the avenue of Falcon Academy is the best way to go, um, to get the kids the support they need.
I understand. And so how does that information need to send out to parents? Is it through the, um, the parents' booth or?
I don't think it's, it's something that we should be, we could be doing is sending, we can send out some messaging on that. I haven't been sending out messaging on that in previous years. So that's a good, good point.
Very well. I can follow up a little bit further on that, or through the superintendent and the chair.
Okay.
What happened? You don't have the naval, um, who'd you say, naval students come?
We did last, last year. There were cadets.
Naval cadets, yeah.
It was last year. They actually reached out to us, and they learned about the Falcon Academy, and they were so happy to come in and share their knowledge about, specifically because of mathematics. Uh, so there was three that had come consistently on days that Falcon Academy met.
Did you reach out to them this year to come back?
We haven't done that yet, but I think that's something that we could do and connect with them. They're always willing to provide those services. Um, and we also have, you know, some students who tutored during that time as well. Um, so it's a great resource that we could reach out to, for sure.
Why didn't you try to reconnect with them to come back?
They had volunteered to us at the time, so I think it depends on whether there is availability or people that want to volunteer. Uh, they came to us and offered the opportunity, so at that point, we took the opportunity to engage them and coordinate that. I think, again, it was, it was three members that were really willing to do it, so it's a matter of connecting with them again and seeing if we could have them come during Falcon Academy.
Ian, you have another question? Ian?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on the peer-to-peer tutor comments. Um, you know, the peer-to-peer is, it can be effective, but it also will be ineffective in the sense that some students are not going to want to share their vulnerabilities with other students. Um, so it can kind of create this weird disincentive to engage. And, um, so like, again, back, sort of going back to the EB tutors and the various, you know, the name of these resources that might exist as well, having something more formalized, like through the school, um, could take a lot of pressure off the students and the parents, um, in order to just kind of like, again, you know, make it more, you know, set up like a homework club, or have them sit in the homework club. Um, just, you know, provide the platform and the connection, because otherwise, like connecting in the community individually can get kind of weird and be uncomfortable, especially, you know, for anyone that's maybe challenging anybody socially. Thank you.
Okay. All right, if we're ready, we can go to the next slide. All right, this slide just breaks down the actual areas where our students fell, not just reaching benchmark, but the four areas. So on the left-hand column, um, on the top there is English. Uh, in red is not reaching, not meeting benchmark. We're at 23%. Um, in yellow, approaching, was at 17%. Meeting benchmark was 45, and then exceeding benchmark is 14. So if you add up the 14 and the 45, that's where that 59% came from, from before. And then same thing with math. Um, as you're looking from left to right, we had 30% of our students not meeting benchmark. Um, 38% were approaching, and then the 23% plus the 9% equal that 32% that we were showing in the last slide.
Ian, what's your feelings on this? Pete, um, Matt?
Uh, the same feelings that I had on the previous one. I think the one thing that I see here is, at least for mathematics, I like that we're at 38% approaching. Um, to me, that means that we have a lot of kids that if we could, um, you know, that could, we're close to getting to meeting the benchmark, that would have raised that 32% even higher. Obviously, I don't like to see 30% not meeting benchmark for math, and I don't like to see not, you know, 23%. These are kids that we need to find ways to support.
In the 30% and the 23%, are there special ed kids in that number?
There are, yeah. Yeah, this is our entire junior population. And we had well over 95% of our kids take the test, so it is a good representation of our entire junior class.
Is there a way to take the special ed kids out of those percentages?
I mean, we could, we could, we could look into that.
incorporates more or includes more than just special ed. I think it's free reduced lunch, special education.
MLO.
And, yeah, multilingual learners.
Yep.
Was there a way to separate that group?
I mean, we could.
I think we asked about this one other time.
I mean, we have presented that in previous years at times. Um, but, I mean, we could, we could, if we do too many slides.
We're happy. We like that.
I would just like to say that it wouldn't be an accurate, at least in my own opinion. There are many special ed kids that excel, so by taking, by just saying that the special ed kids are going to be in the right category, I don't think is accurate at all in my own experience and my own understanding of things. I don't.
I would agree with that.
So I don't, I don't think that that would be it. And this is, I mean, everyone else in the state is doing something similar to us, right, by including COVIDs. We use, if we're kind of considering the SAT to be a standardized test, because everybody did it at the same time, everyone else is, has the same numbers in the state.
But it could be for our use only, doesn't have to, you know.
Yeah.
Some of the stuff we ask for, you ask for, too, is for the board use. It's not for public use. This is for the board use that we just want to see.
Yeah, I don't disagree, but I just don't think that special ed kids would necessarily end up where you think they would end up.
I'm not thinking they end up anywhere. I just want to see the data. Jen?
Um, if I could just interject on that point.
No, no, Jen's next. Hold tight.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Jen.
I just want to, I just want to make sure that, you know, you mentioned this, that three categories, and I'm always going to come back to it. Just because you're poor doesn't mean that you're not capable. Just because you're learning a new language does not mean you're not capable. What I think, you know, like where Beverly is trying to get at, and I would want to see him, too, is that there are some special ed where we know that they're never, you know, like, they're always going to perform at some level, and then there's other special ed where they are going to perform, right? It's just trying to make sure, because we, as a district, have a higher proportion of special ed compared to other districts. We think we're like at 20, and other districts are 15 or 16. Is it that extra 4% to 5%, is it negatively impacting the results? And that's still the reason, like, you know, what is impacted that 5%? So are our other, are our other students here really performing at a little bit of a higher level than like what's being illustrated? So I, it's not necessarily good or bad. It's just like trying to understand the data.
Yeah. And again, this is one day, one test, you know, like, so to.
Yeah, and it's not SATs.
Yeah. Yeah, and did they take pride when they took this assessment? Not every kid did, but we're, you know, that's one of the efforts we're making, is to try to get them all to do their very best. But, yeah.
Okay, Ian?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, no, I want to circle back to what Ian was saying. Um, you know, I don't think it's a fair statement to ask to extract the special education numbers from these numbers, because special education students are the whole spectrum. Like, there are high-achieving, high-functioning special ed students that, um, you know, just a few years ago, we had, we had a, you know, very high-achieving special ed students. So, you know, there's special ed students on grade level, and, you know, that circles back to the high-end tutors, um, that we, that we need to improve our numbers with. Um, you know, to supply the special ed supports for people that do have high capabilities, but maybe some, um, other issues that they need support for. Um, so, you know, they can be just as capable of achieving benchmark or exceeding benchmark. Um, and again, this is sort of reiterates also, like, you know, having, yeah, I'm concerned about the approaching benchmark numbers in that mathematics, because that 38% number is just sitting right there. And, you know, that's where we really got to focus efforts, I think, is to have a good, you know, the red and the yellows are, you know, we really got to put the resources. And, uh, you know, but it's not fair to say that we should extract the special ed round, because we have very high-achieving, high-functioning special ed students. Yeah.
Mitch?
Is this reflective of what you see on report card grades for students?
No, I would say that the report card grade would be, would be at the higher level. No, it's not. I would not say that. I'd say we definitely, we don't have, like, even if we were to say approaching benchmark was a D, we definitely don't have 38% of our kids at the D range, you know, at the D range, that's for sure. You know, that's a good question.
But you monitor those grades all the time, too?
We do.
And give support when needed.
Let's do the next slide. All right, this slide is our NGSS, so that our science standards. Um, we, in 2022, we're at 44% reaching at or above benchmark, and that's dropped down to 43 and then 42 over the last two years. Uh, again, not, not really, you know, I'd love to see this number increase. We did incentivize this past year, uh, students that reached benchmark were exempt from their, for their midterm in this upcoming, um, winter midterms. Uh, we thought that that would show a positive jump, and it did not. Um, but we're also now, our science is committed to, to doing the interim benchmarks on a regular basis, uh, which I hope will help. But this has been an enigma that we, we're trying to get these numbers up in science. And again, one of the big things is getting the kids to take this test seriously. And I thought by adding incentive last year, we would, we would see that, and I think we did. Um, so it might be other factors as well.
Excuse me?
Yep.
I didn't follow some of that. If the students achieved benchmark, they didn't have to take the midterm exams?
Yes. So, uh, if a kid, when they take this, just for that one subject, for science, so if their junior year, they achieve on this test and they reach benchmark, then they're exempt for that midterm the following year in whatever science class they're taking.
How do you grade them fairly compared to other people if they don't have a midterm grade?
They would be exempt. So just, uh, it would not, their grade would be just an average of their quarter-one and quarter-two grades, and the midterm would not be part of that calculation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Mike?
Here's a good example. I've often had this question, 44, 43, 42, 42. To me, I see that as more or less static, but I was always, I've always been kind of wondering how much of a percent jump, um, is significant in a way. A couple, more than a couple percent, clearly on the other test, the 40 versus, you know, the, in the 30s, that seemed like a significant jump. But I was wondering if, does NGSS apply any information about that?
I mean, I think the best you could do is kind of look at, um, what, and I don't have it in front of me, like, what the state averages, percentages, and to see how we compare with the state or other schools in our reference group.
Uh, because that would change from year to year.
Yeah.
True.
But.
And is it, um, a tough, you mentioned math instruction, getting, uh, math teachers. Is it tough also getting science teachers? Because I mean, you do have a staff of science teachers.
We do, and yes.
Is that also a challenge?
It is a challenge. Um, yeah, the applicant pool for math and for sciences is very, is very low, and we, and sometimes we have to repost, uh, you know, vacancies multiple times until we find the right person. I do think we've done a good job, a really good job, but it is an extreme challenge, especially in science, because you have, like, physics, and you have, you know, like, so you need to find an instructor that's certified in physics, not only just being certified, but being a good teacher certified in physics. And then the challenge of chemistry teachers in all of those areas. So it's a little bit more difficult than the other subject areas in the hiring process, making sure we have a good mix of teachers with different certifications.
And then when they take this test junior year, right, so they're not just being tested on their science class junior year, or sciences from two years ago.
Correct.
So that could be.
Very integrated.
Do other, I don't even know this, do school systems ever do sort of a holistic review for the NGSS? They'd be teaching to the test, which they don't necessarily support, but is that, is that an effort? Because something I learned two years ago is, it might not be there anymore.
Yeah.
Crisply, at least.
I would say those interim assessments are helpful.
Yeah, and I think we could be doing a deeper dive in our, in the assessment itself. And honestly, getting our kids to take this test seriously, like, in that time, they're starting, a lot of our juniors are preparing for AP, IB exams and so forth. So, um, I don't think they make this as high a priority as some of the other assessments that they're taking. Um, so.
It's pretty consistent with the eighth-grade numbers, though.
It is.
Roughly, these are higher, I think, but roughly.
Yep.
You'll set, Mike?
Yes, thank you.
Ian, you have a question?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, do we think, um, some of these, um, programs of science might be associated with the, um, I mean, how early do we integrate science in elementary? Seems like maybe that's a more of a question for you.
I would say elementary is totally integrated. It is until high school, really, that you have, you split out the biology, the chemistry, and the physics. Even ninth grade does an integrated approach, so that they get each of those disciplines within the science.
All right, so, and then how much overall, like, instruction time on a foundational level do they get afforded towards science, um, as opposed to like math, reading?
The same. Um, science in the middle school secondary is a core. And, you know, it's four years of that core curriculum, just like math and ELA.
All right, um, so, um, my, my experience was that the science was not really emphasized. Has that changed in the past, like, six, seven, eight years?
I think that's been part of our graduation requirement for the 12 years I've been here.
No, no, I meant for the elementary level.
Oh, elementary? Well, I would say that.
Reading and math.
The NGSS standards kind of came to us about 2014, and so we have had the work with Terry Henkel, who really, um, launched that initiative with us and helped train the teachers, as well as Kreck, and, um, and that was K through 12. So I would say that we've really done a very good job with some of the PD. And, um, I would say right now, elementary is probably faced with time constraints, because the focus has been literacy and mathematics, but they do have science in there at least three to five times a week, and our magnet themes are STEAM. So they get the additional instruction with partners and programs in sciences, so.
So is the approach, like, kind of just, uh, having like math and science like secure each other on a, on a, on that level? Like, where they're doing, emphasizing like math skills and analyzing science and?
Well, yeah, I think it's integrated, or using science as a context for mathematics. So it's really important that those are kind of woven together, which you bring up a good point, Ian. So to disaggregate it, I would say that, you know, it is also a core in elementary as well, but it's also, can be integrated. The S, I would love for you all to see the NGSS assessment, because it requires a great deal of reading and reasoning and mathematics and experimenting online and trying to figure out problems. So it's really quite, it's probably one of the most, um, difficult assessments that we have, because it takes all of those core, you know, abilities to be able to reason and make sense, and then to answer the questions. So it's, I really would love to share some samples at fifth grade and eighth grade and 11th grade for you guys to see and dabble with.
Is there anything that can be done? Is it?
Yeah, yeah. I'll figure it out. I would love for you to try that. Yeah, I think you have. What we say about. S back. S back, yeah, we said this. Yeah, with S back, too. Just the different levels and the different areas would be great for you to. Yeah, with S back, too. Just the different levels and the different areas would be great for you to kind of see. Not that I'm making excuses. We want the kids to do well in this, and we want them to be literate, numerate, and scientific, so.
Are you smarter than an eleventh grader?
Or smart as a fifth grader.
All right, if we're ready to move on to the next slide. All right, we reviewed this with the curriculum committee in more detail, but I also, we felt like it was important to share some of our AP scores and our IB scores. On the left-hand side, you see the last three years of AP tests taken. What we're very proud of is if you look at the number of tests taken, they've increased every single year from five forty-three in 2023 all the way up to seven thirteen. Not only have they increased, but the average has also increased from two-point-three-eight in 2023. It's, our average score now is up to two-point-six-oh, which is below the national average of three-point-one. But I do, I want to, we have every single student that's an AP student take the test, and that's unique. That's not, most schools do not offer for every one of their kids to take the test. In most districts, students have to opt into taking the test. So not everybody takes, you know, they may take the AP course, but they're not actually taking the test at the end of the year, whereas all of our kids are challenging themselves by taking the test as well. So that's our AP scores. If there's any questions on AP, we'll answer those first, and then we can go to the IB.
Does a kid have anything to lose by taking the test?
No, I mean, it's a cost, right? It's a cost to take the test, but they don't have anything to lose by taking the test except the stress and anxiety of, unfortunately, a lot of our kids, not unfortunate, it's great. They're taking six AP courses, which is, we're very proud of them for doing that, but then to watch them at this test-taking time is not really a fun thing to see. They are getting overtested. So that would be the cost, I guess.
Okay.
I think, do we pay for the AP test? We pay for that? The district pays for that?
Yep.
And we get reimbursed for free and reduced lunch students.
So this is AP scores in all areas?
Yeah, that's every, yeah, any AP test, those were all averaged in. During the curriculum committee, we broke it down into subjects. And that presentation should be in the agenda from that day.
Mike have a question?
Oh, I just looked at the average grades, but maybe you said this, it's creating increase in the number of tests taken.
Yes.
Student exposure to testing.
I would have predicted, I definitely would have predicted a lower average, seeing that, you know, we're making a really big push at Fitch High School to get more kids to challenge themselves with AP tests, IB courses, ECE courses. So we saw that large increase, so I didn't expect to see the increase in the average as well. But there it is, and I think that's something to be very proud of.
Jen?
See Matt, I can understand like the gray section, like the two thousand and twenty-four average is three-point-one.
So the national average is three-point-one.
Oh, the national average, got it.
Yes. So we are, we're below that national average, but again, we, every student at Fitch High School that takes an AP class is taking that test.
No, that's fine. I just didn't know what it was, because I was like, our average never came to three? And so then when I told people why, I was like.
I should have put national.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely should have put national there. And then if you look at the IB scores, in 2023, we had forty-eight tests taken. It increased to one-twenty-eight in 2024. We had a hundred and two. Those are just our seniors in IB. They take their test the second year of the IB class, and then the averages are there as well. We did have a pretty big dip in 2025 with the scores, but again, I want to caution, you know, looking from year to year on trends on this, it's a very, it's not a large number of tests, like for example, that's really in, like out of those hundred and two tests that we're taking, that might be a kid that, like if one student is an IB student, they might have taken six tests. So that might mean that there were fifteen kids that really took the test that year. There's no questions, we can.
And there's the old average.
Adrian has a question.
Yeah, I was just going to talk about from the, and we're going to talk about ECE, which is a highlight of our district, of how many of these credits actually transfer into college. So, you know, I looked at UConn, Eastern, Southern, URI, and UNH, and they pretty much all require about five on IB for a test board to actually transfer into a credit. And I think it's about three on most of the AP exams transferring. UConn actually requires a lot of fours and fives, but most of the other schools. So as far as success in gaining college credit, ECE, which you're probably going to say this in a minute, but it's like ninety-five percent of the kids that take an ECE class.
We can pull that up, Mark.
Get college credit, where AP, it's about twenty-five percent.
Oh, not four, yes, thank you. You want to fix a diploma, though? And get a different license?
Yes.
All right, yeah, so it's just, AP is about twenty-five percent of those grades actually would transfer into those schools. And IB, it's a fair amount less than ten percent for the last year, although it was much higher the year before. So I just thought that was something we talked about in the meetings.
Yeah, so our counseling department's done a really nice job of expanding our ECE offerings. And a lot of that is, you know, just, we have to get our teachers to get certified, dual certified in order to teach the college-level courses, which we've had a ton jump at the opportunity over the last few years. And that's really what this slide is showing. Last year, we had three hundred and twelve students receive credit-worthy grades, so received college credit for the courses that they took. You can see the breakdown there. Two hundred and seventeen of them earned an A, seventy-two earned a B, and so forth. Comparable, at the curriculum presentation, we showed the slide for twenty-two, twenty-three, and then twenty-three, twenty-four. And back in twenty-two, twenty-three, just two years ago, we had a hundred and fifty-one kids, or credits that were earned. So we've more than doubled that in two years.
And also, ECE could be a UConn class, or it could be married to an AP class with.
And that's what we're trying to do.
And IB, so that they could get the credit along with it, so.
Ian, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So what was the total number of IB diplomas that we've issued? Last year or the year before?
I could get those numbers for you. I don't know them off the top of my head. I, you know, I would say it's usually typically ten, around ten, ten, twelve. Last year, I honestly, I would just be throwing out numbers right now. I don't know the exact number.
That's the full IB diploma?
Full IB diploma, correct, yeah. So we have some students doing that and then others that are taking courses in the IB program. And then also our career program, they're required to take a certain amount, not as many IB classes as the DT program.
So in order to offer an IB diploma, we are required to offer a certain range of IB classes, is that right?
That's correct, yeah.
Which then kind of displaces our ability to provide other courses if, say, we wanted to provide different ranges.
Yeah, I think one of the things we're trying our best to do is combine as many classes as, you know, when the opportunity exists, that we can get ECE and IB or anything like that, so that we don't have so many different offerings, because that just pulls our kids into making choices as to which higher-level course they can take. So it would be great if we can find a way to blend the classes together, and that's what we've been doing a lot of work on.
And the average, what's the average size of the graduating class over the past six or five years?
About two forty.
About two forty, and around maybe ten or so? I'm not sure.
Yep.
Like less than one percent of students?
No, it would be higher than that, but.
We'll have to get that data to you, Ian. He's estimating.
It would be closer to five percent.
Okay. Yeah, no, I'd be good to get that data, get a good solid readout of like past five, six years here. And just get some comparative analysis going.
Okay. Mark, next slide. All right, so these are the action steps that we presented last year around this time. This is our focus areas. We did do a lot of work looking at finding ways to be proactive with our attendance policy, which we, I think, refined the work this year, and I think it's, you're going to see that where we're showing much better gains thus far, and Ms. Hodge is going to talk about that in a little bit. Our focus was making sure our kids celebrated RISE and really just always emphasizing Falcon Pride as much as we can. And I think our kids are exuding Falcon Pride, and it helps with the whole climate of the building, but also with how their efforts are with taking tests and so forth. Last year, we committed to no cell phones during instruction, and we were somewhat successful. I feel like this year, we took a couple more steps over the summer, and I think that that's shown even more success. Getting them away from their cell phones has been huge. We always try to access our student leaders in the building to push and motivate their peers, whether that's through tutoring or them going into advisory classes and, you know, helping them log into College Board or set goals when taking either the SAT or in early January, they're going to be going in and helping preparing our freshmen and sophomores before they take the midterm.
Did the two students come and talk to you, Matt? Because they came to the board and they had a great suggestion, and they were supposed to come and, supposed to go and talk to Matt, remember?
Yeah. Yeah, they didn't after the meeting, but was it, was it something about like the ABC chats or something different?
It was, it had something to do with the CTL class.
Yeah.
And maybe a senior and a sophomore.
Yeah, 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 they had talked to me about that, and we.
They're gonna.
Yep.
And what are you doing?
We'll get to it in the next slides, yes.
It's coming.
It's coming. Um, tier one, you know, we're always taking steps to improve tier one instruction with our PD and with getting into classrooms for observation and so forth with our mini walkthrough system, continuing our work with data team. Our departments utilize the TLI time once a month for data teamwork whenever possible, but they also, on Wednesdays, we combine CTLs to free up some of the departments to get a little bit more time to work with their data teams. And then just last year, it was the first year we really started to try to add incentives for our students that, on the SAT or the NGSS test. And the outcome, as we said before, in mathematics on the SAT, we were first at our district reference group, so that's a group of schools that the state compares us with when making decisions and so forth. We scored thirty points higher than any other school in our DIRD, and we were forty-three points higher than the district average. And we were second in English, thirty points above the average, and we were just, we were at four ninety-nine, and the top score was five hundred for the average score in the English SAT. We more than doubled the numbers as we went through before with the ECE credits. We have a large increase in AP, IP test participation. We had twenty-five seniors last year earn their seal of biliteracy. And our career pathways are starting to expand, which we are extremely proud of. Next slide.
Okay, let me give Mr. Brown a break.
Thank you.
Yep, all right. So what I'm going to do for the next two slides is talk about our action steps for the next two years. And I know you had the packet ahead of time. The district priorities are on the left. I'm going to speak to what Fitch is doing on the right. So we are continuing our collaboration with the curriculum department in terms of getting up-to-date curriculum on our dashboard. That work is ongoing as well because of our NEASK accreditation. That was one of our kind of focus areas. I think it was about six years ago when we had our collaborative conference visit, so that work continues with the curriculum department. We also actually had a really interesting development in the area of NEASK. So in October, we went to a conference which was just down the street, so that was great for local folks like us, called the Gibbs Conference. It's an IB conference. And there we went to a presentation with NEASK and IB, and we learned how we could sync our IB work and our NEASK work into sort of one protocol. It's called the Collaborative Learning Protocol. So now our IB sort of reflection, self-study process at the high school is now synced with our NEASK process as well. We have some upcoming meetings. One timeline got shifted a little bit. But the great news about all of that is, is when our faculty and when our, you know, leadership is working on reporting to NEASK and to IB, they're working on those reports together. They're looking at student work together. They're looking at student data sets together and reflecting on our facility together. All of it now is going to be one synced sort of protocol that NEASK and IB have. That does mean that we sort of shift a little bit in the NEASK world. We were part of the Commission of Public Schools before, and now we'll be part of the Commission of International Schools. It doesn't really change much for us, except it helps us not do two things when we could be doing one thing a lot more effectively. So we are pretty excited about that development. Also, into the next box, we have been doing quite a bit with making sure that there's a consistent through line with our professional development, our academic walkthroughs, and our mini observations. We are really focusing on student-centered instruction, active learning, and kind of extending our own learning into some ongoing partnerships. With the K to twelve literacy grant, we're working with Dr. Toby Emmert, who was previously our mentor for National Urban Alliance. We worked with him last year. That work continues next semester. And also, I know you've heard his name a few times already, the math department is, has been working with Tom Nolway for building new classrooms. With these two partnerships for literacy and numeracy, we're kind of excited about just bringing more active instructional strategies into our classrooms. You can go to the next slide, please. I'm taking a little bit longer going to the next slide. Thanks.
Mark, can you go to the next slide? Thank you.
Excellent, super. I thought I was the, you know, one a little bit behind. So in terms of our work with data, this year, we also have a series of workshops on the SAT that began at the beginning of the year, and that involves all of our core academic departments. Tomorrow, our core academic areas during TLI are all working on PSAT data just from October. And that work is going to be continuing throughout the year. And Dr. Mancini was one of the people that kind of helped bring that series of workshops to us, and we're really grateful for that work. Additionally, we do continue to really utilize and rely on the TLI days that we have during the year. I know that Mr. Bass mentioned them as well, but that is key collaboration time that we make really, really good use of. From the time when the buses drive away, our teachers are working until they are dismissed late around in the afternoon. So it really is consistently, once a month, a good like three-hour span of time where we are just working on different PD that we really need to have. So we appreciate that time being allocated by the district. Our support model this year is also really kind of pushing a lot more, I would say like spreading things out to our tier-one level. There are a few new things that we've been working on. As a result of our visit in June to the Ninth Grade RISE Symposium, we have a huge focus on ninth grade this year that has resulted in something that we're calling ABC chats. ABC chats are basically check-ins that our students are doing with their CTL teacher. They're periodic. We're kind of looking, we're doing twice a month. We're kind of looking to see how that's working, because we want students to be able to get that extra amount of time during CTO. So we might be kind of like shifting the model that we began with to make sure that we're being consistent with some things that we're getting back with feedback from students and teachers. But ABCs stand for academics, behaviors, credits, and connections. That's why we call them ABC Square of Chats. And what we're doing is we're having students have one-to-one conversations that are what we call on-track conversations. How are your grades? Are you on track? Bs are better. How are you doing? Can you bring that one up? How is your attendance? Are we kind of setting a goal for our students to say, okay, if you are absent two times per quarter in any one class, all right, you're kind of hitting goal, because we want to keep students away from the number nine per class. we wanna keep students away from the number nine per class over the entire year, because we want them in school, because that's where they learn best. But Carmine is gonna speak a little bit more detailed on that in a minute. We've also developed school-based attendance teams. That's another point that Ms. Hodge is gonna mention in a few minutes. But we are really targeting our attendance initiative and kind of looping that attendance initiative with our assistant principal and counselor teams. Each assistant principal is assigned a section of the alphabet. We have the gaga's, the goes, and the ah's, and we are paired, we're each paired with two school counselors, and now our school-based attendance teams, which meet weekly, are linking up with our, our AP counselor team. So, in terms of our efforts for what we're doing to really work through our action steps this year, I would say one thing that best describes this year for Fitch is flow. Like, everything is kind of connecting, everything is kind of networked, and I think that's because this is really almost the third full year we hope that this team has been together, and we've really worked hard on that. So, Adam is gonna take you into the section on School Fly Day.
Thank you. I will say that you, you notice a lot of connectedness between what I'm gonna mention here and some of the points that Amy just made about all the different things that we provide for our students.
Hold tight for one second, Amy has a question. You have a question, Ian?
Uh, yes, thank you. I just wanted to ask a quick, uh, how, how long are the CTO periods, and how many students in each?
CTO block meets for 35 minutes each day, and there are roughly 13 in each. There's supposed to be smaller advisory groups, so every teacher in the school is matched with a CTO group.
And how often do they meet?
They meet each day.
Every day, okay, great, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So what I'd like to do is just review some of the, the climate surveys that we get every year, and it's gonna replicate what sort of what, what Mr. Daniel reported on earlier, three, three areas, student, parents, and teachers, and specifically with the trusted adult. Just to start with the students, you know, in, in the 2023, 90%, we dipped a little bit in 80, uh, the 23, 2040, 85, and we're presently at 88 positive feedback from the students. I feel, and, and I will, I will continue to say this message throughout, is that as this administrative team working for three years together, I think we will see progressive, you know, positive, it, it, you know, increases in all of this as we move along. As far as the parents, you can clearly see that there's an upward progression there, but the question of, I am engaged, I am, I have the opportunity to be part of the school, the school community, from 64, 23, to the last year, 75%. And as mentioned earlier, I'm very proud of this. In the past, certainly, we've always had the, the point that, you know, I would like personalized PD, and certainly here, this shows that from 23, the beginning bar, bar graph there, 35% to 69%, I think certainly that's showing that our, our teachers are being heard, and we're providing them with opportunities to, to really dive in into what they're, they're specifically needing at that very point. So if you, if you turn it to the next slide, unless there's any questions about that, it kinda, it's a kind of piggybacks on, on, on this, so I could continue. It, it, it just highlights all the positivity that's come out of the survey questions and the results. So, just to review, so from the student survey, positive change evident in every survey question. So, we went upward in every single one. Increases in connections. Want to highlight increasing connections in clubs and activities by 8.3, at 78.3, meaning that every student is involved with something, and we certainly want that to be at 100. We want every student to find something beyond the classroom so that they're connected, so that they're involved, coming back, engaging, and talking about, what Mr. Brown talked about, building that spirit in, in the school, and, and the pride. Parent survey, positive change in 15 of 16 questions compared to 2023. 21% increase in communication through Parent Square. That has been a valuable tool for us to communicate effectively and efficiently, because it gets right there to the parents. Staff survey, growth noted in overall respectful atmosphere in the school, 15% increase, 23% increase in efforts with prudence. In other words, our teachers are seeing that we, we as a community are making efforts together to increase the student participation in the school. And ever since we started using Educator's Handbook, it certainly is, is, it gives us a lot of information about how students are behaving and/or whatever, what's, what are they being written for, and how we're responding. And just to highlight some points there, 343 less reports of cutting class, meaning our students want to be in class, so something good is going on there. 127 less incidents of defiance, and 13 less incidents of altercations. We certainly, I've certainly seen, from being the dean to now, the decrease in those types of behaviors, especially the altercation, so to me, speaks about a positive climate from the students, teachers, and, and overall.
You mentioned, when you say 343 less reports, and 127 less incidents, that's out of how many?
Compared to, so compared to the previous year.
23, 25.
So like, for example, the altercation, there was 11 incidents of altercations last year compared to previous year. It was in the twenties, and that doesn't mean that there were 11 altercations either. Obviously, in each altercation, there's at least two people involved, so, and a lot of times, it's even more than two people, so. So there has been a decrease, and then in terms of like, uh, I'd, uh, the actual numbers, I forget what they are, but, um, they, you know, more than got, cut in half in each of those areas.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
So, we're gonna continue to cultivate a rich and vibrant learning community, and as compared to the district priorities, our school action steps for this school year, and some of the things you, we've already mentioned, like the cell phone policy. That has really been something that we have been targeting this whole school year, and between the students, the parents, the teachers, and administrators, that has improved when many thought it would not. We started with the focus groups at the end of last school year. We started with the teachers, and we included the parents, and we included, included the students. And with the feedback from all the three different groups, we have a new cell phone policy, which I've been doing well. I, I, I think so. There's some things that I'm missing here that I want to point out. The Spirit Weeks is, is up there. That's one of the most fun times of weeks that we have. That's a chance for us to relax, a chance for the students to relax and be silly, and as well as the, the four or five of us to relax and be silly as well. Whether it's dress as a student, whether it's tomorrow's activity, okay, shh, that's right, or, or the Spirit Week where we dress in different, uh, you know, pajama day, and, and snowflake day, and all these different activities. So it's a fun time for us to include that Falcon pride and have a good time. Morning music is another one. This is a time where we have diverse musics, teachers, students. We also contribute and add to the playlist. Mr. Brown is our DJ for the morning, so it's all types of musics where we can get, if not the scene ain't going, our bodies are moving. Mini observation process, we, I think we are improving, I know me personally, improving in making sure that we observe, if not every day, often throughout the week. And the best part, and we hear this from teachers as well, but the best part, I believe, is when we have those conversations with the teachers. When the teachers are really able to share with us what's going on in their classrooms, when we have some time even to ask them how they're doing in their lives, or their just, their personal lives, their teaching, challenges and improvements. But that is a time, and many observations process is really improving, and we're progressing with that. There's one that's not mentioned on here, is the EOF, Feeding Our Falcons. That's our Equal Opportunity Fitch. It's a play on words. If you, you all have known and heard about Equal Opportunity Schools that we still partner with. The Equal Opportunity Fitch is our, our organization that was formerly DI. So, we have taken on a new focus, which, not taken on a new focus, but continue the focus more so of our students, addressing our students' physical, mental, and social needs. So what that group is doing, and it's, again, teachers, we have developed a, a format in which we are raising money as fundraisers. So, starting in September, October, we did a coffee cart in which we had teachers donating about $650 at that time. Last month, we did another, and it was about $200. So all that money is going to help feed our students lunch and breakfasts needed. So they're given a ticket. We see that the students may need a meal, and so they're given a ticket if they need lunch at any time during that period. ABC chats, we talked about the ABC chats. Every adult in the building, was mentioned earlier, every adult in the building has an opportunity to go into the classroom and just chat with a student, whether it's a security guard, whether it's Officer Busque or SRO, whether it's parent educators, everyone has an opportunity to go into the classroom to chat with our student and ask them about their attendance, if they made any connections with other people in the school, or about how their behavior and grades are going. All form of version of caring adults or trusted adults, we call them caring connectors. And we are assigning an adult to student, or student to an adult, to make sure that they have someone that they can go to. We're developing that program right now. Eventually, we want to have our student caring connectors. So we are also going to have our upperclassmen to be able to connect with underclassmen. We're learning through our modules with Mari Washington, that not only do students come to school to see our shining faces, but they come to school to see their friends as well. News from the NASS. This is our newsletter that goes out every week, and it provides parents and families and community members every, everything that goes on in our school. If you wanna know about Fitch High School, you just read that newsletter. It's posted on Parent Square. It includes weekly, a reflection of, of, Mr. Brown, I like that, Mr. Brown, you have your weekly reflections there. It gives a calendar of what's gonna go on in a week, our upcoming events, our player or athlete of the, of the week, and different highlights of activities that are gonna go on in the school. If we move on to the next slide, this is the slide that I like to call Teacher and Student Voice. This is where students have an opportunity to lead the different events in our school, whether it's Navvions, or the National Honor Society, the SEAL CTO Fridays. Students oftentimes have recommended activities they would like teachers to hold in their classrooms, so they sign up, and that is another time where students can relax and enjoy themselves, whether it's through puzzle playing, or, uh, what are some other ones, Amy? Amy, release this one.
We have hot cocoa coming up. We have a demonstration with homing with cream on Friday. Met sports and volleyball is really popular. Basketball is really popular, but also a crocheting knit group, you name it. We had 23 teachers sign up to sponsor as hosts, just to do fun things to connect with kids. It's once a month, and kids love it. We had about 170 this round students sign up to participate in SEAL. So it keeps going every month. We're really excited about it.
And then what we know for sure is that when we have our students lead our events, more people show up. Whether it's the freshman orientation, whether it's expo night, whether it's the eighth-grade fair, we always have our students act as tour guides, we have our students act as ushers or greeters, but we know that when we have our students lead these activities, people show up. We also have those clubs in our school, whether it's More Than Words, BSU, National Honor Society, Future Female Leaders, that's a new one, that are always doing something with in, outside in the community, whether it's Thanksgiving candle drive, whether it's coat and mittens, whether it's talking to another middle school in our community. We have students who are not only productive and want to impact our school community, but also our local, local community. And I think that's it. Oh, I'm sorry, next slide. This is, yeah, this is the major one also. No, before this one, the attendance? Oh, it wasn't added. Okay. We had a nice chart on there where we compared the average daily attendance to the chronic absentee, absenteeism rate, and just to tell you, and I do have evidence, that, uh, just let me say this, last year, our focus was average daily attendance. And after meeting with, um, Anne Marie, Angela Wheeler, Angela Wheeler, we meet with all the time, like almost every week, she joins us for our school-based attendance team, Mari Washington, and Rebecca Bayes. We noticed that our concern, yes, was the average daily attendance, but the, the, what we should have been looking at as well was chronic absenteeism. We were paying attention last year more than what, more to what we would call the 20 percenters, and those are the students who would have 30, 40 days that are, that are absent. What we found that the ones who were really impacting our attendance were those students who were out maybe three or four days a month, and that was a good slew of them. So we're gonna flip the script, and our, our focus now is on chronic absenteeism rate. We have school-based attendance teams that are meeting every single week, and like Mr. Brown said, at the, at the very beginning of the presentation, we're taking a more proactive approach to this. So, the administrators and the counselors, as soon as we get the report at the school-based attendance team, they know, each of the administrators know which families or which students they should be meeting with right away. And then a plan is developed, whether it's an agreement to say you're gonna be, come back to school, and what steps are you gonna take, or maybe we need to do, make, uh, a little, I wouldn't say drastic, but a probably more in-depth plan about what we're gonna do to return you to school, okay? And again, you, and you already know this, there are different reasons that people are not coming, students are not coming to school, whether it's anxiety, social, emotional, clothes need to be washed, there's something going on at home. So again, it's our job to develop those relationships and figure out why our students are not coming to school and help them meet those needs.
Can you share the numbers?
Yes, I'm sorry. So comparatively for our average daily attendance, for September 2024 is 92.9%. September 2025, this is attendance, that means daily attendance, that means students are coming to school. So 2025 is 91.6%, I'm sorry, 93.6%. So it's up from 92.9 to 93.6. October 2024 is 92.7, and went up to October 20, 2025 to 93.5. When we talk about chronic absenteeism, and that, remember, is the rate at which students are not showing, are not present in school, 24, 25 is 25.2, and now we've decreased that to 18.4. So we got a bit of ways to go, but we're really improving, so. We're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this.
Any questions? Adrian?
This is to go back a little bit, but what we have, we have PSATs and SATs for assessment data, but what we have for, and then we've got obviously the IB, AP, ECE testing and stuff. What do we have for assessment data to show that our, you know, our instruction is, is effective with the college prep level classes, specifically the college prep level in junior year, senior year, which is kind of, you know, outside of everything that we, that we talked about tonight?
So we have COVID assessments, you know, like COVID unit assessments, departments have created in common midterms, common final exams. Those are really the, the main, like, regular assessments that we're using in our, in our college prep courses, and that the data teams focus on when they're, when they're meeting and so forth.
All right. So, so it's just in the, in each department, there's, there's assessments, and there's department leader that will receive that.
Correct, yeah.
All right.
Just had, um, three questions, but. I just had three questions, but first two to pre- check. The idea, I know you missed it, who is that with? It's between a student and their counselor or teacher?
Yeah, their CTO teacher is the person that I guess you could say is their steady. But then you have a building-wide push that any staff member that is Greek is generally pushing into rooms too. So we push into classrooms, school counselors push into classrooms. During ABC chats, it's like sacred time, except for those two times a month. And we all know that during chats, that's what we're doing, what we're doing, what we're talking, Mr. Brown.
That's great.
Yes.
Another question might come up later, so I'll ask it now. Remember there are two retirements, I think, one was science and a master of science and then in business? Are those, maybe one of those positions wasn't filled? I was wondering if both those positions are filled at this point? One science teacher, one, I think.
Science was, but the business was not.
Business, we're down to two in business. We used to have three.
And then?
The science, yeah, we kept the science.
Okay. Because the business, that's that extra, it's a different certification, I think, for business?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the third one was, so we've talked about efforts to raise the four-year graduation rate, and I was wondering, when you see, say, a senior this time of year who might be in jeopardy of not graduation, is there like an intervention team that's, like a list of students, an intervention team, seeing what needs to be done, how they can most efficiently help them, you know, get past that hurdle?
Yeah, basically, will any, any senior that the counselors see any concerns with, especially around this time, reschedule meetings with their families, with their teachers of the classes that they're struggling in? And we'll have a meeting right now and kind of showing where they're at, fill out a contract of ways that we can help support them and so forth. That all happens really this month. That's the biggest support we do for our seniors. And I think our biggest, one of our biggest learnings from me and Amy went to the RISE Symposium meeting in June of last year, right at the end of school. And that was like the emphasis on really focusing on the ninth graders, making sure that they have a strong ninth grade in order to, because a lot of times, if a student doesn't pass ninth grade or doesn't get promoted to tenth grade, those are the kids that are not going to be graduating. So that's like part of the ABC chats for us, at least for the rest of this year, is as an admin team, we're committing to, what we're doing is we're going into the ninth grade for the most part in those chats.
Because you can see where the hurdle might.
Yes, try to address it now before it's too late.
A small course correction early is better, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Dean, you have a question?
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to circle back to the absenteeism thing. And I know that there's some talk a couple of years ago about adding an award for acknowledgement for students that have perfect attendance. Is that something that happened and is it happening?
So this, I would encourage you to probably come join some of our district attendance team, because that has been one debate on whether we should award students for doing something that they should already be doing. We do, in our, in our Fitch High School, we do have boards and monitors that we highlight which grade level has increased attendance from week to week, but we don't highlight a specific student.
Okay. So district attendance team, is that necessarily a meeting that I could attend?
You know what, I just, you know what, it's a meeting that is for the district.
Because I mean, honestly, I mean, I think there would be value, should be there is value in it, for those who do succeed in the poor attendance, you know, just, you know, so we don't even know that, you know, who it was that really came to show up.
Yeah. The only, the one big concern, especially with perfect attendance, I mean, I don't know what that number would be, but we also don't want to encourage kids to come to school when they're sick. And, you know, like, we don't, that's the other angle on that, that you've got to be careful of.
But the goal is just to encourage all of our students to be there. One of my, my mantras is you can't get a good education if you're not in the classroom. So we're encouraging all students to be there.
All right. And the other one is about the career counselor, or I guess I have two more questions. The career counselor, is there any more thought about trying to increase that to a full-time position or to add a second part-time position?
Sure. We will take whatever we can get, but she's awesome, she's amazing, and does an amazing job, but.
I thought she didn't want to work full-time.
Not at this time, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe there's a room for a second part-time, then.
If you go to add to our budget, if you want to, Ian. I think you're putting the high school people on a.
I know.
That could be a budget question for us.
I know.
All right, and then the last question has to do with the career pathways. As far as that goes, how do we anticipate any changes on our end as far as like the shift in the downgrade of the nursing profession from, or no longer being a professional degree?
We're not even. Professional degree.
On a national level, they recently downgraded nursing from no longer considered a professional degree.
Well, we think it's a professional degree, Ian, to your point. We absolutely believe it's one of the highest professions needed, and we will continue to do that.
Melissa and I agree with the change.
Yeah.
Saying, what is that going to impact what we do?
It's not going to impact it. Yeah. No, we're not going to let it impact us, as you probably feel the same.
Mike?
We're in a budget conversation, I guess?
Yeah, another conversation. Mike?
Well, I guess there's something else, but just say it's very positive to see the growth and happiness with the professional development, because it speaks to better professional development and also how it's wonderful to see that. And the student results are quite good and the parent ones are too.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you guys so much. We really appreciate it. I know it was a long evening.
Next year, we'll do one school at a time.
Yeah, maybe not have so many things on our agenda. We were being too ambitious, I think.
Well, we don't have to go through everything. I mean, and it's.
Well, I thought, since we've waited so long, it might be good to do the early childhood and we can postpone the other one. I know we have some people online probably anxious, but we'll postpone it, I think. It's up to you. You're the chair, I'm just here.
Lori's been waiting. Lori's been waiting. She's going to be so tired. I mean, I don't know.
Thank you, Lori Ferguson. Thank you, Sherry Fakers, for being online with us this whole time, but we will reschedule it. We appreciate your enthusiasm for the dream.
Do you know what the D stands for, dream?
Department of.
Oh, I like that. I was going to suggest dynamic.
Oh, don't DMS would be good. I like that too.
All right, next is Tynan of the store.
Thank you to our preschool teachers who are.
Yes, thank you, guys. I can't believe they had to do this, so I know. And Karen too. They need a lot of coffee.
You have them coming up.
Yeah, yeah, come on. I told them they could come up. Come on, come on, guys.
You don't have to speak, but you can just be there to support the team, and this is a team effort for sure. I'll start with saying that we had a wonderfully attended walkthrough at Mary Morrison this morning, where I think almost every single one of our pre-KTK preschool teachers was there. We talked about the Mary Morrison vision and of having an early childhood center. They've actually been on board from the beginning, when I first got here and even before I got here, they were saying that they talked about William Sealy at one point being an early childhood center. So this has been something that I think this district has thought about for many years, and even when Mary Morrison closed, we really kept it as a school because we always envisioned that this could be a potential of space usage to revitalize the school and make an early childhood center in one location for our kids. So with that, I just wanted to introduce.
If you don't mind, just wanted to introduce Jane Robert, integrated preschool teacher at Mystic River, Rita Mangalings, integrated preschool teacher at Mystic River, and Elizabeth Hutchins, speech and language pathologist at Mystic River. Thank you for being here.
And then we'll open it and get you started.
So Karen Hyatt, I know, I'm back again, special supervisor for early childhood. So I know last time you were here, you guys asked for research a little bit about just some of the benefits for early childhood. But we see, Office of Early Childhood actually just put out a lot of research and like reorganized their website, so we did want to give you guys that website if you want to kind of take a look on your own. As we said, this is like a huge endowment in an issue from the governor, especially for this year, and we'll kind of talk about that throughout the presentation today, but I just kind of pulled out some really, you know, important facts and research for you guys. The most research from scientists is ninety percent of brain growth actually happens before the age of five. So every interaction, you know, playing, learning, talking, is so important, obviously, and that's why the teachers are still here, three hours in, and they're so committed to it, which is awesome. And all of that really just builds, you know, all of the connections in the brain, the pathways and things that shape the child's future in learning. So, and I know last time you kind of spoke to, wanted some specific data to like underrepresented students, but the second bullet's over all children who experience like high-quality early childcare and preschool programs. They're twenty-five percent more likely to graduate high school, every single child that goes through a high-quality learning environment, or time more likely to complete a bachelor's degree or higher, and earn up to, and I would say probably even more than twenty-five percent more with kids as an adult. So there's some pretty big percentages and impact that early childhood represents. For underrepresented students specifically, it really can significantly shrink the school readiness gap. I just pulled out some like racial groups that you might be interested in. The black-white gap for school readiness scores, which is nearly twenty percent in a high-quality early childhood program. Latino to white gap by almost thirty-six. So these are some really significant percentages and how important this is and why, you know, we do what we do every day. Also, a huge preschool can help mitigate risks with poverty such as high likelihood of abuse or neglect. Children in public preschool programs are half as likely to be victims of abuse and neglect as students that are not attending. So again, some very potent research for you guys. Obviously, there's tons out there, so, you know, I know you guys will and know how important it is, but the OEC website is really good if you're looking for like specific data to dedicate.
Office of Early Childhood.
How do you describe a high-quality early childhood program?
So one of the, is accreditation program that actually Groton is already through is for the NIAC program. You have to meet, you know, certain criteria, and there's checklists and things like that. And we'll go through kind of the timeline for this project, but one of the things that we've been working with is a consultant from LEARN who's been working with us to make sure, you know, if this comes to fruition, which hopefully it will, we're meeting all of those checklists, that they're high-quality program and the criteria, we're working with her. So, so really like maintaining those certifications, the PD, you know, having their staff. Yeah, we have a great one coming in tomorrow for our early childhood staff, so just meeting those requirements and continuing to, you know, be up to the other best research and best practices.
Bev, the checklist, the checklist coming around gives you some of the indicators?
That we've worked off of, too.
Yes, yep.
Is this what Mike asked, or is this what he asked for Mike?
This is the checklist of the indicators for a high-quality program.
Okay.
Yes, National Association for Education of Young Children. This is early childhood.
And Groton has, they've been accredited for a long time, just because Mary Morrison, the early childhood center that we're proposing to you guys, would be a new school, we would go through accreditation again, but, you know, that's why we're working with the LEARN consultant. I don't think there would be any problems getting that accredited again. We actually have the highest accreditation plus now, they kind of changed it, that you can have in Groton. So again, I don't think there would be any issues, but we want to make sure we maintain that.
And the building and facilities, the infrastructure is really an important ingredient along with the teaching and learning and the curriculum. So Sam's been on board with the checklist, too, walking around and.
Yeah, so we'll go into that a little bit for a draw, but maybe just your question. So this is a little bit more for the research and kind of why it's, you know, so important. They actually, NBC News just came out, and I don't know if you want to speak to it, because I know you found it, but they actually just came out, I think December 2nd, how our area of the state is actually considered an early childhood desert, which means that our need is more significant and we have more students that are age-eligible, but we don't have the spots for them. So that's kind of what they're referring to as far as a desert. And you can see obviously the starred sections of Groton where the need is, and it's right where Mary Morrison is, which would be very nice. Obviously.
And Thames.
And Thames. But, I mean, it is definitely, I think we're probably one of the highest deserts, they're calling them, in the state, along with New London, obviously was part of that NBC News article, that came out as well, but I don't know if you want to say anything else, but.
That was it, yeah.
Well, and we just saw from the middle school and high school, the sense of urgency to improve scores, and as this board, I commend, because they've talked about really focusing on the early childhood standards and what can we be doing there, and to give every four-year-old in Groton an opportunity to attend a highly qualified preschool program, full day. It could be essential ingredient to really our kid's success from cradle to career.
All right, so I'll do the next two slides. We wanted to really kind of map out for you what our programs look like currently. So currently, we're, again, the grant is a Smart Start grant, so the focus of the grant is on expanding our current programs. So currently, we have eleven classrooms. Mystic River has three, they're AM, PM, half-day sessions, one full-day classroom, that's our pre-KTK classroom, and one ABA classroom, that's also two half-day sessions. Northeast Academy has one pre-KTK full day. Thames River has two full-day classrooms, TK pre-K, and three integrated preschool classrooms, which are AM, PM sessions. So our total preschool classrooms currently stand at eleven. And just a reminder, when we say integrated preschool, we mean fifty percent students with IEPs and fifty percent typically developing peers. A proposed expansion would move us to two additional classrooms. So we would move seven classrooms. They would be full-day classrooms for four-year-olds to Mary Morrison, funded through the Smart Start grant. Two additional classrooms that would be funded by an Early Start grant that Shannon's going to talk to you a little bit more, that's a new grant that's just coming out as we speak. And then our one ABA classroom would go over to Mary Morrison. So we would move ten classrooms to Mary Morrison for next year. We would maintain three classrooms for three-year-olds at Thames River Magnet. They would be integrated preschool classrooms with an AM, PM session with three-year-old students with IEPs and their typically developing peers.
And this is for next year?
This is for next year. The ten classrooms at Mary Morrison would be per. The 10 classrooms at Mary Morrison would be primarily for, almost exclusively for four-year-olds. Most districts have maintained, even when they moved to a full-day program for four-year-olds, they still continue to service their three-year-olds in a half-day program. That's our proposal for next year, yes.
I have a question.
Of course.
You're going to need a principal and a staff.
We're guessing. Yep, we're going to, we're going to share that with you.
Mike?
So on that, if I can on that side there?
Yes, yes.
So in the current 11 classrooms, I see that, you know, three of the classrooms in two schools are half-day sessions, right? That's 12 sessions, and then if you add up the others, that's another five, so that's 17 total sessions, where, I don't know about the ABA, but I presume that's probably full-day.
That's half-day, two half-day sessions.
Oh, it is half?
But we do have some students that have lunch recess with kindergarten, like one student, but some students that are full-day.
Oh, okay, so...
It's a little bit more flexible.
So I'll just say it's one ABA classroom, and then it's 12 half-days, and then four full-days. And then to the proposed, I can see the, it's still one ABA classroom, and I can see that now we're reduced down to six half-day sessions, right? And then really bumped up to 10, or to nine full-day sessions, right? When you go to the proposed, there's a lot more full-day sessions than there were before. And so I can see that as advantage, and it's actually a lot easier to have childcare, education through a full day, and so I can see that advantage. But that said, the current mode has 17 sessions, and the proposed one has 16. So are we contacting, are we supporting less students in the proposed model because there's less sessions?
No, no, we've specifically added the two additional classrooms, which would probably need to be special education classrooms. Part of the proposal for the grant is instead of move, instead of maintaining a 50-50 ratio for special education students and typical peers, the grant requires a 70-30, a 30-70 ratio.
Which way?
So 30 special education, 70% typical peers.
Which grants out the Early Start or...
The Smart Start.
But there are, there are less total sessions in the proposed?
This is a projection right now, based on our enrollment, so we believe that at this point, that will meet our needs for, for next year.
So I guess, so to me, it is one less session, but it seems like that's less students that would be in the new proposal. We need better education, you know, but...
Mike, we actually use data to support this, so we know who our four-year-olds for next year are going to be, the ones who are the year before kindergarten, so we really already took that into consideration, even with the switch to the 30-70 split to get more typical peers. So we've kind of worked that out using real data, so that that would accommodate. Now, could there be a submarine come in and more four-year-olds want a place? You know, we can't really predict that there could be others out there that may, but we used real data, right Karen? So...
Like in the current configuration, it seems like there's probably as many, if not more, slots than in the proposed one. Am I missing something?
You're right.
I don't think you know, I don't think you're missing anything. I think, so I think our full potential, you're right, I mean, the slots will look, because it's moving to half-day, a full-day. So I mean, but you're right, there probably will be less slots, but that's based on the enrollment that we're proposing for next year. Could it change? Like we may have to open another classroom or decrease a classroom depending on the enrollment, but you're not wrong, the number of seats. The seats do look different because they're half-day versus full-day, but...
Right. Plus, the proposed programs are at full capacity. Right now, we have referrals from birth to three, so in Connecticut, a student is eligible for an IEP and FAPE, a Free Appropriate Public Education at age three. So we have to have slots available in those, in that current configuration, and we will, in the other configuration, too, for students, but it will mainly be at the Thames River program site, for students who turn three throughout the year. So depending on when the student's birthday is, we have a 90-day transition conference with birth to three, and then when they turn three, we have to make a program available. So, so the proposed is at full capacity. Right now, we're not at full capacity because we have to reserve slots for children for the rest of the year who turn three from January to June, or who maybe are referred, we also get referrals from daycare centers, parents, you know, other community partners.
Shaun, you have a question?
Yeah, sorry about that. So I have a question about why Mary Morrison is being looked at as a site. From my understanding, there are no sprinklers there, the drinking water is not good there, there are mold issues, there's issues with the ceiling, there's a lot of issues with the building. So I'm wondering why Mary Morrison is being considered, because this is going to cost a lot of money to be able to get the building and the classrooms up to par, and I don't know if we have time or the money and the budget to get Mary Morrison there.
Sam, do you want to answer that question, Sam?
I mean, you're familiar with the buildings.
Yeah, so I'm not familiar with the mold issue at Mary Morrison. The water tests are being scheduled, we're going to be testing the water again, making any corrections that we need to make there, and...
HVAC testing?
And also, yes, as part of our annual HVAC testing required by the state, we've decided to include Mary Morrison in that testing this year, so that we'll have an answer on that soon, too.
We do, we do have, in like a further down slide, we do have kind of a timeline and what the checklist will look like, and a lot of those items are on the checklist.
And there will be a fire marshal visit sooner than later, so that we can look at anything else, like sprinkler systems and that kind of thing. Shaun?
I just have, the fact that we don't have students in that building now, because the condition of the building and other issues just is a major concern to me that we're going to help put young individuals. So I'm all for, I have both my kids, one's in TK now, the other one went through TK, I'm a huge supporter of the program. I just don't think we should be looking at facilities that are going to cost a lot of money to implement these programs if they're not ready.
I think the building's really been kept up very nicely. I think the teachers were also very excited during the walkthrough to see it. Many of them were teachers at Mary Morrison, so the rooms are actually bigger than our new schools, and they're solid. You know, they're not made of wallboard or... So there's some things that they did back in the 60s, 70s that, you know, have held up well. And so we do look forward to sharing with the board some of the things that we'll be looking at, and the timeline, and the budgetary. There's construction money that goes along with these grants, both in, in the Smart Start and the Early Start, there's additional, and Shannon has a lot of details on that as well. So as we go through the presentation, hopefully Shaun, and if you have any questions, just make a note of it, so we can answer any future questions, too, that you have.
Thank you.
Ian, you have a question?
Well, yes, thank you. So yeah, Mike, I just went to Mary Morrison shortly before it closed, and just to try to remember, why did it close? Why, what was the rationale then?
We were building three new schools, and we really, at that point, didn't need the space as a school. We were consolidating, but we always kept it in just in case, because we always thought that this could, depending on the, you know, being in a Navy community and all of the building that was going to be happening, we wanted to make sure we had space. And as you know, with the five elementary schools and the two secondary schools, we've talked about it to the board, very honestly, we are filled to capacity. So we have used every space, so by having this, the early childhood center move, or early childhood programs moved, that's also going to give us more room in the Thames River and Mystic River for additional classrooms for kindergarteners, first graders. So we're just kind of thinking ahead.
All right, so I understand you're working on a presentation for the board with more details. Would that, would be the health assessments as far as the water rooms?
Yeah.
Were there effects there, perhaps?
Well, this is the, this is the follow-up, trying to answer a lot of the questions that were generated by the board, so if we get through the, you know, slideshow, we'll...
One thing I'd like to add to that, and hopefully the rest of the board will support it, would be they have like a floor plan of the building as a little story, where we could show like where all this stuff is going to happen?
Right.
How it relates to the operations that are going on there?
Yep, we're doing that, as you, as we speak. We're getting all of that information together.
I can just finish my, my question. Yeah, just to have the whole committee report all put together, you know, if we take a note from that, over the past many meetings, we've talked about it, but, you know, the the food service there, what would be the thought for the food service for the, for the full-day program?
They would remain. The food service would remain, treehouse would remain.
You've talked about this.
We already talked about, we already talked about that, Ian, that the food service would remain there, and so would the treehouse people would remain there. We talked about that.
Food service for the students, is it kept, is it kept there there?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, it's a full...
It's a full school. Shaun, you all set, Shaun? All right.
Next slide.
Okay, so we wanted to share with the board that the components of a program, if we were to move forward with this plan with board approval, obviously, the Mary Morrison Early Child Center, Childhood Center would include all four-year-old students, minimum of 15 students per class, transportation, and we would eliminate some of the half-day runs that we're currently doing at Mystic River Magnet, opportunities for play-based specials. So the state has required that all early childhood programs embrace a play-based learning approach, so we thought it would be very advantageous to have a play-based coach that would provide specials, which would give the teachers a planning period. We would provide school meals, breakfast and lunch, and we would have, continue to have classroom para educator support for the classrooms, you know, based on, you know, para support just in general, as a classroom para, as well as one-to-one paras or shared enhanced paras, depending on student need. And then, shh, oh, Karen's going to go next.
That's okay, you can keep going. No, so this is kind of the projected timeline, and Sam, you jumped in, just jumped in, but basically what we're doing now, the fire marshal will come out with recommendations, like I said before, we're working with the consultant from LEARN, who's helping with us, you know, all of the checklists that you got, HVAC testing, water testing, we already, Clint already went through and kind of did a needs assessment and plan for us, and then just this morning, we did the walkthrough with the preschool teachers and staff. So I don't know if you guys want to say anything, it was just, it was really, I, like Susan said, I think everybody was there, there was so much like excitement and like creativity in the air, everyone, but I mean, they, I think, they, really, it really was.
I would love for you to share some of your enthusiasm.
And I mean, Jane, you know, like she came with, it's funny that you mentioned the floor plan. Everybody labeled where they're going to go. We have extra rooms for this.
Thank you, Jane.
No, it's...
Thank you so much.
I mean, I was there for 12 years, so I was at Pleasant Valley, then I was at Mary Morrison for 12 years, and I was really sad to have to move out of there, because it's a great school. And it really would make a fabulous early childhood center. It's, you know, it has ramps, we used to stand on paper plates and do penguins, you know, going up and down the ramps, and it's just, it's a really, it's a neat space for small children. It really, it's designed well for that.
Lot of outdoor space.
Plus we have a center courtyard, I started, you know, a community garden there that we can get restarted again, the, you know, Navy housing, they used to come in in the summer and help us with weeding and watering, and we would have a booth out there that they would come and pick vegetables, and people could take what they wanted home, and it really was, it was a great, we have a lot of really great things there that's, that are already established, so I'm personally, I would be very excited about it. Yeah, it might look a little rough in some of the rooms, but really, it's, it's a good, I mean, I've always felt it was, and I don't know if it's a good or bad thing, but you can open windows. And I've got to tell you, that's my biggest problem with the new school, the closed system, is that you can't, you know, you can't open windows. So I love, I love that idea, that we can get some fresh air in there again, yeah.
Not for nothing, but universal pre-K is being pushed for a reason. You want to improve your middle school scores, invest in universal pre-K, honestly.
And Rita, haven't we, haven't we seen also that there seems to be a trend in our neighboring districts of full-day, pre-K for four-year-olds?
Well, right, and like the Magnet schools, they're taking some of our students, and then we're paying for them. Like if you want them to come back to the district, parents are saying, I need full-day. Like I can't, I love your program, but I can't stay here, I need full-day. Twenty years ago, we had parent, we had a waitlist a mile long.
Yes.
Because there was always one parent that was home and could transport. Like the full-day kids did when we first got, we used to do the lottery, parents would be standing there, you know, like...
We haven't done that in about 10 years.
And we haven't needed to, because we can't fill the spots sometimes for the peers, because people need full-day. They need full-day.
Thank you.
It's probably for Sam. So the projected timeline, right, it's December 2025, we're practically like halfway through the month. If you could just like put some tentative dates that some of these things will happen, so that we could tell that we're on schedule. So like is the fire marshal coming like on the 10th, HVAC will be tested on the 15th, whatever it may be, and then estimated timeframe of when we think the results are going to come back? And I know you can't, like the fire marshal's going to come, and the fire marshal's going to come.
We can get that to you, though, Jen.
Okay, yeah, because, do you think, Sam? Oh, yeah, the IT, our, you know, assessment and stuff, because when funding facility walked through there, when we walked through, there were some parts, like in the front of the school to left, or treehouse wise, like it looks like it was in good condition. The right side, where, like I asked about this before, is where those four schools, our classrooms will be. So if we're going to have seven, the three in the back, those were a little bit more weathered, it's put nicely, so I don't know, like, has anyone that wasn't mentioned here has like, like anyone, like a carpenter, or, you know, somebody like can come in and give us an assessment of like what it's going to take to rehab some of those rooms? Unless it's your team, if you're like over there.
They've already done some cleanup. You'd be surprised. I'd love to take you through, because a lot has been cleared out.
And two of those rooms are currently being used by our early childhood assessment team?
Yes, the two on the right, yes. So, but I'm just saying, like, what will it take, right? We have a finite amount that, like Shannon was able to get us, but is it, in order to rehab those rooms, is it going to take her full grant that she was able to procure for, secure for us? You know what I mean? So we need to, like, what percentage of the 1.2 million is going to go just to rehab Mary Morrison?
Right, because Jen, one of the things that we know we need is we need to have a little TLC on the playground. So the playground has been sitting, you know, exposed to the elements for quite a few years now, so we do need to rehab and TLC the playground, and the fence is, needs to be, it needs to be fully enclosed, and we need to bring in some wood chips. So we've already identified that as an area that we need to focus on, but Sam, did you want to talk a little bit more about some of the rehab that you think is needed, other than, I mean, we have it over here, I know, I don't think Karen has gotten to it yet. Do we have more?
It's more like, you know, like some of those tiles, like, and like some of the back rooms. the back rooms, you know, like, because I get, we're going to have kids in there, right?
Yeah.
Like, they're going to be walking, they're going to be crawling, I just want to make sure it's safe.
Right, there is one room where there's a line-
We had a two-room, we had a leak in it.
Yeah, we're not going to be using-
Where the tiles need to be replaced, but that's, that's not a major problem. Most, 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 uh, most of the work is in painting, polishing the floors, that sort of thing.
Some bathroom repairs.
And then we may have to replace a lot of window units for air conditioning, so some of those may need to be replaced, but again, a line of course overall. As far as the fire marshal concerned, I've already called him, he hasn't given me a date yet. Uh, the HVAC testing is going to take place during the winter break. Water testing isn't scheduled yet, but I'm going to be working with the town on that, and the rest is Clint is working on those items, on IT, so.
I don't know if it matters, but we did, there was asbestos abatement there, so the whole school was redone, and it wasn't, I know my memory, you know, time goes by quick, but it wasn't a really long time ago, but all those were replaced at that time.
Oh, they were, okay, good.
So I don't know if that makes a huge difference, but-
They were pretty clean today.
Yeah. And there's a couple of rooms that have carpet, but that's because they had been done prior, so.
Mm-hmm.
I only know this because my room was, my room had done, been done previously, so it was used as storage.
Sam, are you going to rehab the whole school, or just a portion of it?
Well, we'll get, um, we'll get the rooms that they're going to use immediately up, up to speed to start with.
And the spaces we're going to use.
And the library is probably going to be the office space, from what I understand, so we'll have to do something in there. One other thing is that quite a few of the rooms right now are used for storage, and I need to get all of that out of there, um, according to fire marshals, so.
But the teachers were looking at that space because they saw some very valuable little tables there.
Well, this, 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 there's something that you're going to, that they use for the, for the, for some of the classrooms, but for the rest of it-
When they move in, you're only going to fix the, rehab the spaces they're going to use, and then at some point, you're going to come back and do the other spots, and they're going to do, is it smarter just to do the whole school at the same time?
I'll have to wait for the, I'm sorry.
Well, and then there is a second source of funding for construction that we're going to be looking into. But there is 600,000 allocated for construction, and we think that is a viable number that we'll be able to completely use to do what we need to do.
Yeah, I think part of it might be, Sam, not to speak for you, but do you have to find, you have to find room for some of the, the storage, the, the equipment that's there right now, right? It would have to go somewhere.
That's all we're going to do. All this stuff has to go out of the board.
Or it will go to be recycled.
But you want to keep going?
Yes, yes.
Uh, yes, the rest is just kind of like our proposed timeline. We just wanted to kind of show you guys what we were thinking, um, you know, May through June, ordering supplies, I've, you know, as Denise said, we need, are going to need to pull that up for eight, but that's for nine, the foundation does need to be closed. Hiring, obviously, we'll get into kind of what that looks like on the next couple of slides. Um, and then, um, July, August, hopefully, all, you know, we'll probably do a lot of work over the summer for installation, for technology, wiring, final indoor, outdoor, outdoor space preparations, and then classroom setups. Um, you know, I, I think the teachers, which is great, they know kind of what the undertaking is, but they're all so excited about it, and, you know, I know they'll all be there.
Let us know when they can come in.
So, I mean, that, that's just, it's a great staff, and they're excited about it.
All right, this is my part here. So, um, so clearly, this is something that a lot of people have been wanting to do, and is the right thing for our children. Um, the reason that there's such a sense of urgency right now is because of the early childhood endowment that, um, was passed by the legislature in June, and it was, um, you know, we were made aware of this in July, and things happened kind of quickly. Um, the state asked us to put in a proposal within a couple of weeks, um, and we were notified that, um, we would be awarded funds, um, for this project. Uh, this, this year is the only year that they're, as of now, that they're offering capital improvements, and so we were approved to, um, for $75,000 per classroom, for eight classrooms, uh, for capital improvements, and then also, um, 600,000 for next year, for '26, '27, for our initial operating year. So, um, just a reminder that early childhood endowment, they're estimating there's going, so for this year, there's approximately 36 million for the state that's been, that's currently being allocated. Um, the first round of that was through the Smart Start Grant. The Smart, the difference between Smart Start and Early Start, Early Start is kind of the umbrella term, and Smart Start is specific for public schools, so only public schools can apply for the Smart Start Grant, whereas the Early Start Grants are for all child, early childhood providers, including public schools. Um, so that funding opportunity, we were just made aware of, and that is very similar to the Smart Start Grant, and that those awards will be for, um, starting this year, January 2026, um, all the way through next year. Um, my sense is that a lot of school districts have applied for the Smart Start Grant, so a lot of the Early Start Grants will probably go towards, um, uh, you know, yeah, daycares, thank you, and, um, private preschools. Um, but we are planning to submit an application to that, um, to, uh, fund that additional classroom that Karen had mentioned. Um, we were also made aware that, um, so they have put out an RFI, which is a request for information about additional needs for capital improvements, so we'll respond to that, um, basically just say, yes, we would like more money for capital improvements.
There's a day to go.
Yes.
More building.
Yes, so, um, so, and then, we've been trying to provide to the information as soon as we receive it. Um, this is a little bit unusual from other types of grants that we've received in the past, and that, um, the Office of Early Childhood is, is in the process of figuring out how they're going to create this program. I mean, they've been doing a lot of, um, there's been a big sort of program overhaul in general up there that's been happening over the past year, and this is kind of another layer to that. But the governor, the legislature has indicated that early childhood is a top priority for them. Um, they dedicated 300 million in the surplus to this endowment, um, so we can feel pretty rest assured that this is going to be a priority going forward. Um, there will be 13 million at a minimum available each year that we'll apply for, and we're hoping by being part of this, like, initial cohort, that that will kind of, you know, keep us on their radar and make us, um, you know, more eligible for like future funding. And especially, um, the slide that Karen showed, that we're in this, which I didn't realize until we started really looking into the research, that we're considered to be this early childhood desert. So, um, but in fact, they have a whole, um, like, funding priority points that go along with that when it comes to applying for other funding, and that puts us at like a much higher chance of getting that funding going forward, if that makes sense. Um, yeah, so, um, you know, thinking about sustainability, last time we were here, we were talking about, um, about the Magnet schools, and, um, like you said, Rita, um, you know, anybody who's interested in this funding, um, some other districts, surrounded districts are already expanding their, um, early childhood programs, so it's really important that we keep pace with that, as well as it's the right thing to do. Um, so this is just sort of a snapshot of this year, so just so you're aware, 54 of our Groton preschool students are currently enrolled in local Magnet preschools. Um, so we don't pay a tuition for preschool students right now unless they're special ed. Um, so we, we are paying some funds for, um, some special ed charges for some of those students, the, the charges range from 2,600 to potentially up to 30,000 per student. Um, so just, and, just so you know, so last year, um, at that same Magnet school, 18 of their kindergartners were in that, in that preschool, so all the students, all of our preschool students that were enrolled in that Magnet then stayed there and were kindergarten. And, um, you know, that, so the longer they stay in Magnet schools, the greater the chance that they're going to stay in there through the whole, through high school.
And that's, that's a class, 18 kindergartners.
Yeah, and, um, and, you know, this, these Magnet programs are great, um, but we're great too. And, um, and ideally, we would love to keep those students here. Um, currently, we have 589 K through 12 students enrolled in Magnet schools in the region, and you can see the, the total cost there, um, so our, we pay about a half a million each year in tuition to those Magnet schools, and about 650,000 in special ed costs. So, um, just something to keep in mind.
Is this, uh, Alcayd trial, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's just a, yeah. Adrian?
Oh.
Oh, uh, sorry.
I was, I was just going to, I'm just, I'm putting my hand up for about a minute.
Okay, I forgot to put your hand down, or, or what, but I'll let Adrian go, then I'm calling you.
Dan.
All right, I was just going to also mention, and we, I was thinking about mentioning the first slide, when we had talked about all of the studies, um, but with all of the peers that we're going to be instructing, would it be fair to say that we're, there's going to be some, um, some supplemental instruction that we're going to save on later on? Maybe less special ed costs and less tutors and, and tier-two intervention and Ron?
That's the reason.
Especially the spirit, right?
But, I mean, it's, it's really hard to quantify how much money that would be.
Yeah.
This isn't a money thing, it's a doing the right thing for the kids and, and helping the kids be successful as possible, but there is a money side to it, and, and that's another way that we're going to be saving the district money in the future. Obviously, it's going to be very hard to say how much that is, but it's going to be-
In addition to attracting our kids to stay here, so last year, we had 18 preschoolers at a regional Magnet school, and they stayed for K. This year, we have 41, so the numbers are increasing. So that's why when Shannon said, if we don't remain competitive, we're going to lose more and more students.
And many of these Magnets are getting them from the cradle, so at eight months old, they start, so, you know, and they may stay.
The other piece is that I know that you're voting on this on the 15th. Um, if it does pass, we really wanted to get started with some advertising and marketing soon, because people are starting to think about, you know, reserving slots for next year. So it's, it's kind of like a mind shift, because it's really competitive out there in terms of attracting these, you know, these students, and we want to be in the game. We want to be attracting them and promoting our program and our amazing teachers and, and keeping our kids in district.
And this isn't the first time we've proposed this. Back in the Groton, 2020, when we built the three new schools and went to intra-district magnets, we knew that we, we wanted to have a seat at the table. We wanted to be competitive magnet too, even if we were only intra-district magnet at that time. But we saw why families were crossing the bridge to get those opportunities for full-day programming, for pre-K, for being able to have choice, and those are all really good things. And I even said, I can't take all of those Magnet schools back because I don't have, Magnet students back because I don't have room, but certainly, I want to be able to have a seat at the table saying, look, Groton, this is what we can provide for your littlest learners, and what we can provide all the way through the district.
Ian?
Can I just?
Let me get Ian. Ian?
Oh, thank you, yeah, it's, it's, it's a little late, so I'll just run down the list. You know, I'm all supportive of this in theory, um, but I just want to be sure that we're, we're being very mindful of the health and the safety concerns. Um, when I was asking about the food service before, what I meant to say was, to my understanding, there's no operational kitchen at that facility, so that's one thing I'd like to see addressed in a report.
Yes, there, there is, there is, Ian.
One of our biggest kitchens.
It's fairly new, I think it's been used really since the school closed, right?
So Chris, Chris got it, Chris, who used to be in charge of whole food service, she got it.
So, can we get back to the rest of my list here, real quick, and I'll just close out, because my kid, um, the parking lot was a concern at some point, I believe, like the safety of the parking lot, the shape and the, the arrangement of things. Um, I think the HVAC testing, that, does that include the air quality assessment?
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Okay, and the bathrooms, um, are they going to be updated to be fully compliant with current standards?
Everything would have to be, Ian, in order for us to open up the doors.
All right, um, so, and the only reason I'm asking about the kitchen is because, you know, back when, when my kids moved in, the, the food was shipped into my stuff.
Yes, that's what we were talking about when you first brought it up. That has since changed.
Okay.
Sam, did you want to speak to that, that Ernie, that that is the hub of our-
That's fine, that's, that's, that's fine, I, I, I understand, uh-
And an excellent kitchen.
That answers my question, answers my concern.
All right.
Okay.
And the, the carpet on the flooring would be one area I'm, I'm concerned about as well, because, uh, when I was last down, we, we underneath that to go to the milkworks, you know, between the carpet and the flooring. And also the asbestos abatement that I mentioned, will we get some write-up on when that occurred, and what was found, what was done, and what may have to be done? Thank you.
Michael and Adrian.
Yeah, just, just two quick points. One, like, the potential future cost avoidance, I, I definitely think that, you know, Groton Public Schools should be the most compelling choice for most of our students, uh, this could help, uh, but the, there must be more costs associated with the, the students going out of district to Magnet schools, because, you know, 1.2 million over like 589, 589 students.
Yeah, that does-
It's only like a $2,000 per student cost, where our per student costs, if you just take a whole budget and divide it by the number of students, is, must be like 17,000 or something, or even higher. Um, so, so that, that point, as you suppose for to other audiences, I'll tighten that one up. Uh, and then my question is, so you said there are 54 preschool students currently enrolled at local Magnet schools, uh, what's our current enrollment with NGPS for preschool?
We'd have to get that from the other thing. I don't know, I don't know at the top of my head.
I can go it up real quick. I, we were just saying the other day at Mystic River, I think we have like a hun- might be like 90 something kids, just at one school.
Uh, as of September 1st, it was 201.
201.
Well, it's more than- But I have, yeah, it's, it's-
You're always coming, but-
Including TK, pre-K?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Thanks.
Now, remember, we're never at full capacity until June, right? Because we have those three-year-olds, we have open enrollment for the, for the year.
Oh, so maybe, how about for last year?
The best number would be June of last year, we can get that for you.
All right, so, um, one other thing I wanted to mention, because my kids attended a, I have a district Magnet school years ago for a little while, and the busing was one of the things that really made that a less desirable choice. So when we talk about kids that we might pull back into the district once we start offering a full-time, um, full-time preschool, is, is it's going to be a savings for parents in busing, in as far as just time sitting on the bus. So I think that there is going to be desire for, for parents to use our program, and for that cost savings.
Not going over the bridge.
And then I also wanted to say that, um, my wife also works with little ones, and I'm guessing that you all started about 15 hours ago today.
Yeah.
So, and are very tired, and I really appreciate, um, what you've done today, and-
I keep saying I have to smile at 8:00 AM.
You'll probably be here in, in another like eight hours, but, but thank you very much for, for sticking with us, I know.
Yes, I agree. Thank you.
Yeah, we really just are excited about it.
I was going to say, they, and they're so committed, and like, they're the best staff, so, um, they're-
What are the oldest? No, she's not, just read this. I'm literally the oldest.
But their commitment and dedication is top notch.
So Susan's just going to wrap us up with the last slide.
Yeah, because there's no money on the side except the total, so.
So the staffing piece.
We can itemize for you.
The staffing piece, we've estimated to be about $370,292 being covered by the grant. And then, well, for certified staff, and then the non-certified, but that's still, you know, up to suggestions and knowing, you know, knowing who the kids are and what their needs are going to be, that could change too. So this is just an estimate as far as, you know, needing to have, you know, administration there, that play-based coach, social worker, speech and language pathologist. So, you know, like I said, it was just an out-of-the-gate kind of estimate, but we will do some more fine-tuning as we go along. And then, you know, that would be through the safe, I'm getting the language. Smart start. And then the early start could be potential for additional seats and additional funds that would help support this over an 18-month period. And then the other piece was the extra construction piece. And Jen's point, boy, if I could, if we could do it, man, woman, power, and finances and get it all done. So I really would hope to bring the three-year-olds in, in another phase to do the half-day program with three-year-olds in the same building. And we'd have then our complete early childhood center.
And then, not to get too ahead of ourselves, but in Phase Two, we would like to consider, if the board is supportive, having potentially a registrar at the, at the early childhood center and a community coordinator. So kind of look at it in time as almost a welcome center, early childhood center slash welcome center.
And we've always had a lot of synergy with Children First Groton, which also works with, you know, Riverfront and TVCCA and all of those. So they're, they may need a space or a classroom, they, you were saying that, Karen. So it'd be great synergy to have that staff as well to help support us and others in the, in the Groton.
They support birth through five now, so I mean, that would really.
For family engagement, that would be awesome.
So there's a lot of really great ideas that we've been coming up with that I think, now that we have the teachers involved in our walkthrough and we've started a Google Drive for people to, you know, put ideas, I think we'll have even more ideas moving forward.
Yeah, so thank you for this workup, by the way. And the certified staff, and obviously, the program coordinator, and presumably the administrator on site.
Yes.
The .6 FTE, then the early childhood social worker, .4, speech and language pathologist, .6. Would we, as a school, would we, as a school system, need to find other funds to cover the .4, .6, .4?
Well, that's a good question, so Karen Hyatt, our supervisor, is at Mary Morrison for a good chunk of time already, supervising ECAT. And she's the administrator for their PPTs when they have them at Mary Morrison. So we would, and she also works with all of these lovely people at Mystic and Thames. So if they were at Mystic and Thames, Karen could spend a good chunk of her time there. And then we might not even need a .6, it could be maybe a .4 while Karen's, you know, doing other duties in the district.
But this would be in addition to Karen.
But it's hard to, like, that makes sense there, but for instance, the social worker, how about hire half a person, right?
So we, well, we have, excuse me, we have an early childhood social worker right now, Jen Theriot, so she would move over, you know, with the program. And then we also have, Liz is working with some preschool students, and she has colleagues in Mystic River and Thames who would come over. So a lot of these, these are some additional staff we felt we would need, but there's a lot of existing staff that we'll go over as well.
Well, I guess, I guess I'm wondering, so just take the speech and language pathologist, the .6 FTE. Would we be, for next year, advertising for a new speech and language pathologist? And would we then have to, in next year's budget, build in, what we're asking for from, for the town, build in a .4 FTE for that? Was that the way to think about it, or do I hire new people, I'd say?
Well, we were looking again at using the grant, so the grant covers not only operations, but it covers the staff.
Part of the position, though, like I'm wondering what the other part comes from. Like, we got a new speech and language pathologist, .6 from the grant, should we be building in our budget if we do this, a .4?
Well, we have folks coming from Mystic River and Thames, so right now, we are estimating an additional .6 for the grant. We weren't projecting a full-time at this, at this time.
Maybe I'll just skip that, I guess I'm not quite getting that. And then the non-certified staff, the, well, the nurse, it probably needs, I think most schools have a nurse and a nurse's aide, or someone on the other side kind of working on the records. I was wondering about lunch aids, recess aids, things like, all the things that kind of make a school go. I was wondering if there are any additional spots there, maybe that's the pair, it seems like there'd be more paraprofessionals.
Well, at this point, we felt that we might not need a health aide, so we might be able to just get by with just a nurse, a full-time nurse. And then we always look at our paraprofessionals helping with lunch recess, so we weren't necessarily looking at adding additional lunch recess aids. And then, of course, we have the head custodian and the school secretary. So again, if we're just starting with our four-year-olds with 10 classrooms, we felt that we could, you know, we could cover it with the staff that we have projected here.
And so for the non-certified staff particularly, and maybe the program coordinator, that's a necessity if we, you know, open up Mary Morrison. Additional teachers, the social workers, speech and language pathologists, play-based thing coach, all important for supporting early childhood education. Could we use those funds to supplement what's going on in the existing schools, Thames River, Mystic River, NEA? Do we have to use those operation funds on a new location, or can we use it at our existing classroom?
It has to be expanded, Mike, so the thing is that we don't have space.
We don't have the space.
There's no room to, if you do this expansion a full day.
If we did, could we use it at existing buildings, like that operational class? That's one of the reasons I wanted to.
I mean, if we're expanding the program, we need more staff.
More staff and more room.
But we need more space stuff.
I'm just asking if, like, could we, say, say there was an additional classroom at one of the schools, could we use the funds there?
Yes.
Okay. And then the supplies cost, like, I'd like to see sort of a breakdown sometime of, like, because it sounds like a lot might be for IT and painting and things, but I have some trouble coming up with 75,000.
You mean the operation?
No, the supplies cost.
We did put together a list of that, but I think in general, the teachers and staff were under the impression that a lot of supplies would be moving over with them.
So it's like 75,000 per classroom, which is not small, so I think it'd be good to see an itemized.
But they have their, so it's in the operating budget already for the current, so these are classes that are moving over to there, and they're taking their supplies with them.
No, this, I guess I'll go back one slide then. Yeah, so 600,000, you said that 75,000 for eight classrooms. So I'm wondering, I'd like to see what that's going to be used for, an itemized breakdown.
The capital improvements?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah.
And then, so I'm still, can I ask what, just, we looked at enrollment, I guess in October, and then compared it to enrollment the year before, when we look at the October. And from 2024 October to 2025, the elementary school enrollment was down 141 students. And the class sizes have gone down as well, which is a good thing. I'm just wondering if other classrooms are going to sort of become available because we're only talking about, I think, two, opening up two new classrooms with this, right? Because we're going from 11 to 13, and then those two, or at least one of them, seems to be associated with a grant that we don't have yet. That's what, so I'm just, it seems to me that we may well have additional room in existing schools. And maybe that happens or it doesn't happen, but if we do move the classrooms in Mystic River and NEA, and I guess two of the Thames River to Mary Morrison, then we vacated, I guess, eight classrooms in schools that are already losing student population. So it seems to me, we're going to spend a lot of money on starting up Mary Morrison, and then we're depopulating our existing schools that have all these layers of security, administration, school community, the place where their older siblings are going as well, in which they'll maybe move on to. So it's, and then I get those startup costs and operating for at least one year, but we would be burdening the school budget in future with additional monies to support Mary Morrison itself. I see the need for more money spent towards early college education, early childhood education, but I'm concerned about the built-in extra budget that we're going to carry forward for decades by opening Mary Morrison like this.
Well, if we want to expand our preschool program, it doesn't, my understanding is we don't have the room to do that within our current schools right now. So this is an opportunity to expand into Mary Morrison and then make us eligible for future operating expenses. Like, if we don't do the capital improvements now, then we will, we're pretty much opting out of the future grants because we won't be able to receive them because we don't have the room for them. I mean, it's possible that down the road, like you said, like those schools might shrink, and then we could apply, well, I guess we wouldn't need the operating, we wouldn't need to be applying for grants because maybe we could support that on our own. But it sounds like there's an additional need for early childhood spots right now, at least that's what the.
But I haven't heard that, because I haven't heard like a projection of, we have less sessions, we're gonna have the same amount of sessions.
Our kids right now are going to New London for daycare and for preschool.
Well, I mean, they are, they might still, but we're proposing, we have 17 sessions, granted a lot of them are half-day, we're going to 16 sessions, we're going to be serving less kids.
So now, we're going from a 50-50 ratio to a 37 ratio. So right now, if we have five special ed spots, we can only take five kids. But now going from like 30 to 70, if we have five special ed students, now we can take up to like eight kids. Because we no longer have to adhere to the 50-50 ratio, is that right? So it opens up like the number of like peer spots that we can take in. That's the goal.
I guess I'll stop, and I will say, like, for this to go forward through the money layers of approval in our town, I think an important component about this is, is the number of students served, like a perspective of what's going on. Because to me, it's, I can see the big gain is going to full day from our session. But it's not clear anymore students are going to be served.
They're going to be served in a full-day program, though, that's the.
That, that is clear.
Okay, Jen?
Just, I don't know if it's going to play a factor or not, but Electric Boat, and actually, the Navy probably more so than Electric Boat. They're building Columbia class in Virginia, and as they're building that, let's say it's 100 sailors for Virginia class, I don't know, and I don't know how many of them are married, I don't know how many of them are kids. And then like the Columbia class, which has to be bigger just because the boat's bigger, so I don't know how many of those military personnel will have kids too. So there might be an influx, and Susan, I think you were going to look into that to see.
Coming in the spring. So there is another Virginia class coming in the spring, so we'll have to be ready, and that will be, you know, we'll be filling up those classrooms again.
Yeah, so those are like the things that we're doing more about.
I mean, how does the board feel about putting this on the agenda for Monday for approval, or do you have to wait another month and gather more information or do you have?
Sure, I mean, I guess to move it forward through this year, it pretty much has to go through pretty soon.
And if we don't, we probably won't have the chance again.
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable doing it, I mean?
Well, I guess we'll wait till whenever we really consider it to decide on our vote, but I have great concerns about going through town council and ITM, and a little bit for the board.
So are you, do you want, do you need more information, or are you putting it on the agenda for Monday for the want to approve?
Well, I guess I'd ask for like the student numbers, but I mean, like, I don't think, can we wait till January to do this? It seems like we need to, it takes a long time to get through town council and ITM.
Why does, why does it have to go through the town council? Oh, because of the grant?
Yeah.
Ian, you have your hand up?
Oh, yes, thank you, I, I sure remember, I thank Mike for listening out of all those concerns, I share a lot of them as well. And again, like, this is another, I know that all this kind of came to a state, but we've been talking about it for a while, but a lot of the language tonight was talking about how we're going to develop, we should come back with more developed detailed kind of approach. And, you know, we're listening, I think everyone is seeing that, for now, we're being asked whether or not we're ready to hold on this next week.
So you're going to answer, yes or no?
Are you? No, I'm not, I'm not in favor of moving at this pregnant pace without, with insufficient information.
Okay, all right, thank you. Jen?
My biggest concern is the building, right, and the viability of the building, but like the program itself definitely, you know, I think it's the right thing to do for our community. So I think there was, so that's my biggest concern for now, but I would like to put it on the agenda because I don't want to lose the opportunity. So between now and next week, I guess, you guys are going to be really busy on top of your regular jobs, whereas Shannon and Jane's here. So I'm okay with it.
And Adrian, I would have to call.
Yeah, I also think we should put it on the agenda. I think it'd be helpful if we could get, there's a lot of questions tonight, and I think that those are going to be important for the board, more important for the other people that will be voting on this. So that, that stuff will have to come through either way to be able to answer all their questions, so the more we can have as far as information, the better for that, for that vote and handling board.
All right, so we'll put it on the agenda, come back with more information. That's A.
That's all I was going to say, was that we need to put it on the agenda, and I think that Sam or whoever else can answer those questions about the building, and we need to move forward on this.
Jay still there, right?
Is Jay?
Jay, let's hear his hand up.
Okay.
I'll call him, I'll call him.
Yeah, I support it being on the agenda, as long as we get all of the information that we've requested, you know, before, and as early before, you know, not like Monday afternoon, as early as we can, thank you.
So yeah, if you didn't take notes, you're probably going to have to listen to the video and get all the information that people have requested, and probably put it in our board packets on Friday. So we have to look at over the weekend before we meet on Monday.
Yeah, we can do that, I think it's a lot of itemizing, right, the staffing, maintenance, capital improvements.
Feature course to the board.
Well, when I mentioned the Google Doc, one of our wonderful preschool teachers. Well, when I mentioned the Google Doc, one of our wonderful preschool teachers went right back, and during her prep, I think she put together a drive. I think she left it in her car, it was right there when I got back to school. And so, we really are looking at those details.
Jay and, and Andrea and Ian, I'm going to have a quick non-meeting after this meeting. It's going to be real quick, like five, 10 minutes. If you want to hang out, if not, I'll tell you what it's about.
Second.
What happened?
I don't know how we project teacher costs to the board when we don't know what the regular grand scale looks like from the state.
Yeah, that's, that's-
I know, we don't get the money.
All those individuals, German? We don't get the money, then what is that cost? That's what we need to know.